Oh, boy.
Is it gonna be a small group to speak?
No, I think it'll be pretty. May 4th, the commissioner's.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that I don't know.
We don't want commotion in this.
I don't know.
How you doing tonight? Okay.
My buddy has it, though. He lives out in San Francisco.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the city council and the county board of commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. For those of you who wish to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak clearly and into the microphone. Each side, those speaking in favor of an item and those speaking in opposition to an item, will have 10 minutes to present items. The time will be divided among all persons wishing to speak. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Bryan has requested an excused absence. Commissioner Durkin?
Here.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Here.
Vice Chair Busby?
Here.
Chair Hyman?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner King Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Santiago?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Lo?
Here.
Commissioner McIver?
Here.
I'm unaware that Commissioner Morgan tried to reach us, but he may have, and as you know, we were unable to receive emails right now and voicemails, so did he contact you by phone?
Yes, he did. So I will need to have an excused absence for Commissioner Bryan and Commissioner Morgan. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Miller and second by Commissioner Al Turk that we provide excused absences to both commissioners. All in favor of this motion, please let it be known by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Our next item, approval of minutes and consistency statements from the February 11, 2020 meeting. Are there any questions about the minutes? If not, I would like to... Yes, Commissioner Miller.
So, in my own notes, I thought there were 12 commission members present, not 13, but I did not take notes on who was here and who was not here.
We can double-check the record. We will do that. I'm almost remembering what you're remembering, so we'll go back and take a look at that.
Somebody could've come in.
Well, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions about the minutes? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes with any adjustments that have been identified. A motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner?
Lo.
Lo, that we approve the minutes with corrections. All in favor of this motion? Let it be known by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we or the staff would like to request an item under new business to just briefly discuss the Planning Commission rules of procedure and a potential suspension of one of those rules so that we can reorder the agenda during the time the comp plan is alive and active, so that we may add an information item about the comp plan without having to seek an adjustment on every agenda. So I'll explain more when we get to that item, but I just wanted to put that out there that we will request to talk about that at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. So then I will need a motion to make that adjustment to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Al Turk, second by Commissioner Miller, that we make the adjustment to the agenda under the new business item, which will be discussed further. All in favor of this motion? Let it be known by the usual sign of aye. All opposed? Thank you.
And a couple of other things, housekeeping. I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that all of the notifications were carried out in accordance with state and local law, and the affidavits for those are on file in the planning office. And for those of you in attendance that were not aware, I'm hoping that you are, that we had a cyber attack on the city's network system earlier in the week. We've been unable to receive and read emails. Just wanted to make sure you know that. If you reach out to us and you haven't gotten a response, that is why. And so the social media will keep you posted on our progress in resolving that issue.
But the city website is up?
It is up, and it's my understanding it's static because it was already there. I'm not sure that new things can be posted. I'm not 100% sure about that, but that's probably one of their priorities, to be able to post.
But if a member of the public wanted to contact us?
Your inform-
Hire individual emails, that still works.
Yes, and your information is on the website. That is on a separate server that was not impacted by this cyber attack. And a couple of other things for this evening, we are recording the meeting as usual, and it is being... Can be seen on broadcast on Channel DTV-8. However, it is not being livestreamed because we don't have the network ability, and there's no closed captioning for this meeting. Just want to make sure you knew that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we are ready for our first item, the public hearing for comprehensive plan, future land use map amendments, and concurrent zoning map changes. May we have the staff report for this item, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. I will be presenting case number A1800011Z1800035. This will be an abbreviated PowerPoint. You won't see some of the maps and all the other information because we've had limited access. However, all of that information is available through the city's website. The applicant is Tim Chivers from Horvath Associates. The property is generally located at 1432 Ellis Road. It is roughly 43 acres in size. It is separated by several properties. There are properties on the east and west side of Ellis Road. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from rural residential and residential suburban 20 to a planned district residential development with a density of 5.706 units per acre. The property on the... The properties on the west side of Ellis Road are located within the city's jurisdiction, and there's a pending annexation application for the property on the east side. Associated with the rezoning request is also a future land use map amendment from low-density residential to low-medium-density residential. And associated with the application is a development plan, which limits the development to up to 200 townhouse units. Just going to summarize some of the existing conditions, which you won't see on this slide, but the property on the east side of Ellis Road is roughly 16 acres. There's a house, some forest, wetlands, and various easements. On the west side of Ellis Road, there are five properties... I'm sorry, four properties totaling about 26 acres. There's an existing house, wetlands, ponds, riparian areas and other features, and natural forests. The staff report goes into a lot of detail in terms of the area-wide conditions and talks about the fact that there's a lot of existing residential growth within the area. It summarizes that there are other single-family developments, apartments, and townhouse units, either existing, under construction, or proposed. There's a pending zoning application for up to 147 townhouse units at 1343 Ellis Road to the south of the proposed site. 1443 Ellis Road is zoned a PDR 7.341, and it's approved for 85 townhouse units. Incorporated as part of some of the existing developments, specifically on the west side of Ellis Road, some of the existing developments have roadway stubs that you may see in the staff report, specifically Torpent Road, Zanti Current Road, and then there's also Hickory-Nut Drive that may have some limited connectivity. But the other roads are extended to provide connectivity for future development, and on the development plan, you'll see that there's interconnection points provided to this proposed site. There's also several garden apartments within the area, the Phillips Research Project, which is 344 units, and the Winsford in the Park Development Site, or existing development, which is 155 lots. So in terms, again, of the existing and the proposed application, the existing zoning is RS20 and RR, and the applicant is proposing a PDR zoning 5.709. The future land use map amendment is low-density, and there's a request to change that to low-medium-density to coincide with the density request. This slide provides a summary of the text commitments that have been provided on the development plan. I'll go through them quickly. Committing to the housing type, limiting the development to a townhouse unit, committing to the number of units, limiting the units to 200, adding additional asphalt on Ellis Road for a future bicycle lane on the subject site, allowing for additional right-of-way along Ellis Road, installing traffic calming devices at various access points, dedicating a 30-foot-wide greenway easement for future trails along the I-40 parallel, I believe, to NC 147. And then, subsequent to the staff report, there were some additional proffers that the applicant has provided, that staff has had an opportunity to review and finds acceptable with some minor grammatical changes, but I'll summarize them here for the record. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $1,000 contribution to the Durham Public Schools. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $20,000 contribution to the dedicated Durham Housing Fund, providing a minimum of 40% of the units, limited to single-family car bays only.
Wait, wait, say that again, please.
There'll be a minimum of 40% of the units are limited to a single-family car bay only. Two of the following shall be provided at the time of site plan: a dog park, tot lot, disc golf, or playfield. And the average block length shall not exceed 600 feet. And then there's a definition in terms of how that's calculated and interpreted. So in terms of the comprehensive plan and policies, staff finds that it is not consistent with the low-density residential current future land use designation, hence the request to change that. Staff does find that it is consistent with 213D. There are neighboring developments to the south. This is an appropriate development within the suburban tier. Staff feels that this development is an appropriate transition between the higher-density development to the south and the single-family development to the north. In terms of 222B, it is consistent for the PDR development. It provides a higher density from what is existing today in terms of the zoning. However, staff feels that it does provide a need for additional housing close to the freeway and close to jobs and amenities. In terms of 231A, as noted previously, there is a lot of growth within this area. There are existing homes to the north and south, various projects that would be providing interconnectivity all relate to that policy. In terms of 232A, there are existing roads, water, and existing sewers sufficient to serve the development. In terms of 812H, there are a number of traffic-related improvements on the development plan that would serve to improve conditions within this area. In terms of 814D, the plan commits to providing additional asphalt for the bike lanes. And in terms of 1111B, there will be a decrease in the number of students generated from this development proposed compared to the existing zoning, and there is sufficient school capacity for this development. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comp plan and other policies and ordinances, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I do have individuals who have signed up to speak. I have two individuals who have indicated... I'm going to open the public hearing, to give the public an opportunity to speak, but I'm looking over the listing right now. Two people have signed up to speak for, and they're the applicant. Three people have signed up to speak against, but I have two individuals who have not indicated what they would like to do. I'm really trying to just allocate the time, so Leslie Cooper, is that a for against? Okay. The individual that's indicated against. And then Emily?
I'd like to remain neutral on this, given my position in planning, but also as a neighbor. I have some thoughts, but I don't want to go one way or the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am ready. I'm going to call the applicant, Tim Chivers, first, and we'll allocate two minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Jamie, are you going to be first? Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, Jamie. So it looks like the four has 10 minutes, so you might want to decide how you want to allocate the time. And then the rest of the individuals, I've allocated two minutes each because for their 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think we'll need the full 10 minutes, but I believe Tim will be fine answering questions after I finish the presentation, and we'll stay within that 10-minute rule.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I'm Jamie Schwadler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of Tim Chivers, the applicant in this case. Tim is with me and available to answer questions at the end of the presentation. What I'll try to do tonight is illustrate a lot of the policies that Jamie has so aptly covered, and then explain a little bit about the additional commitments that we're making here. This request is threefold. It's a rezoning, a future land use amendment, and an annexation to close what we call a donut hole in this area of Durham that is experiencing a significant amount of development. But we're doing it in a way that provides appropriate transitions from the existing density to the north and west, which is relatively low and existing product, down to the higher-density and newer development to the southeast of that site. And I'll show you a couple of slides that kind of illustrate that. So that really is the theme of this case, is that we're providing the needed residential density in this area and doing it in a way that is in harmony with the surrounding area and the change in density. As you can see on the screen, directly to our south is the Winsford at the Park Development. Those are townhomes. Going further to the east is the Phillips Research Park Apartments that Jamie mentioned. Just to the north, in the parentheses of the townhomes, is the Atwater Townhome Development that was approved. All of those have a higher density than the proposed 5.72 acres that we're proposing here. And then, of course, to the north is the single-family development that's RS10, excuse me. This shows the... A little bit of the excerpt from the staff report, which shows the actual density that we're talking about here, the shaded areas on our site, or two tracks on either side of Ellis Road, and then, of course, 147 to the west. It's okay. So you can see with our density on the screen is at the 5.7 units per acre. The PDR, the Atwater, immediately to our south is 7.4, and then it increases its density as you go on. These are a few of the views of the site. This is looking south on Ellis Road, where the site is to the right of your photo and to the left. Looking north on Ellis Road, the site is on the left side of your screen, and the neighborhood to the north is on the left. This is the site facing north on Torpint Road. That's the northernmost point from the Winsford at the Park to the south of us. You can see what exists there today, and I'll go into an explanation of where the traffic calming elements are. Through our neighborhood feedback, we had two neighborhood meetings, one neighborhood meeting and one kind of a follow-up. The zoning was filed quite a while ago when we came back. And the main concern we heard was from the folks at the south, the Winsford at the Park was concerned about cut-throughs with our traffic. So we agreed to the traffic calming devices at access points four and five that's on our southern boundary. There were also some concerns about buffers. We're not required to have a buffer to the north on the east side of the road, but we've included a 10-foot buffer there, and that there was a neighbor that spoke about not wanting a connection to the north on his property, so we removed that connection. And we came back with the key text commitments that you see on your screen. Jamie has aptly covered those, so suffice it to say, it's just it's a townhome development limited to 200 townhomes with significant traffic calming devices that I'll show you on this slide in just a second, as well as some traffic improvements that really focus on the expansion of Ellis Road. Jamie's also covered the more recent text commitments, which go over the contributions to Durham Public Schools. We're actually reducing the number of students that would otherwise be generated on this site, but we are providing both of the commitments for the Durham Public Schools and the Affordable Housing Fund. And then the remaining are more quality-of-life or variety-of-development issues. The 40% of the units limited to single-car bays, the amenity package, and the average block length were all feedback that we heard, meeting with the commissioners and with the community. And so this shows you the development plan with some of those key commitment features highlighted. You can see that the site spans both sides of Ellis Road, and the light areas are the existing riparian buffers that will need to remain intact. The yellow are site access four and five, where the traffic calming measures are being committed to address the concern for the cut-through traffic and slow traffic in that area. And what this does is enable us to preserve a good portion of the site that's adjacent to 147, either in open space, tree safe area, riparian buffer, or some sort of amenity. The green dash lines there you see are contemplated stream crossings that will have to go through permitting process, but they're envisioned to be pedestrian stream crossings, and the bold line you see there would be the vehicular crossing. So we're trying to maintain the eastern portion of the site closest to where the greenway connection would be, and 147 is predominantly an open space area. And with this, you can see the change to the flume. It's a minor change from the orange area, or excuse me, the yellow area, which is low-density residential, to the orange area, which is low-medium-density. And you can see, as the site again, that this area falls from the northwest down to the southeast, how that gradual change has already occurred in terms of density increasing as you get closer and closer to RTP, and development has kind of crept into this area. So what we're dying to do is just complete that with a density and a transition that makes sense here. And according to your staff report and the commitments that we've shown here, we submit that this meets the criteria of 3.4, 0.7. The change from low-density residential to low-medium-density residential is consistent with the intent and goals of the plans, as Jamie highlighted from the staff report. It's compatible with the existing land use pattern surrounding the area and how that pattern has changed over time. It will not create substantial adverse impacts because it's an appropriate transition, and the site is of adequate shape and size to accommodate the change. The rezoning also meets the requirements that you're called to look on in 3.510, from the more rural residential to the PDR. With the future land use map amendment, it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan in all respects. This is a compatible zoning and conforming uses with the nearby property, which is predominantly residential. It meets the housing demand that you also desperately need in Durham, and the infrastructure available sufficient to support the proposed development would be in place, assuming the annexation is passed in connection with this request. And just to highlight the annexation, it deals with one parcel that is currently a donut hole in this area that doesn't have the completed services, and that's the parcel that will be completed here. So with this, we submit that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the commitments made, both in the staff report and at the table here tonight that have been vetted by the city staff. We believe it's consistent with your policies, and we're happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual, Tim Chivers, for.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm available for any questions, if you guys have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll start with the individuals who now signed up to speak against. Betsy Brown? Joe Feinsen? If you will come to the... Is Betsy Brown? Thank you. Okay. Joe, you just got a few extra minutes, if she's not going to speak at all.
Thank you, Chairman Hyman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Joe Frasena, and I reside with my wife, Betsy Brown, at 2021 Hickory-Nut Drive. I'm one of three residents, three of 12 residents on Hickory-Nut Drive, which is the dead-end part off Ed Cook. There are 12 homeowners on Hickory-Nut Drive, and myself and two others, Dan Wickman-Boucher and Julia Apoyan, have taken it upon ourselves to kind of canvass the homeowners to get their responses to this development. It's not that anyone is truly and wholly opposed to it. A few are. We've become used to the fact that we live on a quiet, dead-end street, and so that's part of the opposition that we've encountered in our talks with our neighbors. And there are issues at the lift station down below. It would be nice to have a gravity-fed sewer system serving that part of Hickory-Nut from Ed Cook to the lift station for sewage treatment. At times, there are emergencies that are called on that lift station, and personnel have to be called out, sometimes by the neighbors. So there's the issue of the lift station. Some of the residents feel that this large acreage of forest land provides a nice buffer, a better buffer than residential or complex housing would be for the traffic noise from 147 and even Ellis Road. Another issue is the fact that Hickory-Nut Drive there is 21 feet wide. The right-of-way is 60. The right-of-way is 60. The right-of-way comes up to some people's front porches on that road. But we'd be interested in keeping that road to 21 feet, or maybe a maximum of 30 at best, to preserve the quality of that part of that neighborhood. There's open ditches on one side of Hickory Nut Drive, so there's an issue there with any kind of major street improvements that could possibly occur in the future. There's a five-foot strip of land that is owned by a private owner, to the best of my knowledge, that crosses the front of the sewage lift station at the end of Hickory Nut Drive. That issue is mentioned in the PDFs on the developer's proposal, and they would perhaps be in a position where they would try to buy that five-foot strip to make the sixth connection into the development, which would be a secondary connection and not a major one for ingress egress into the development. So there's a five-foot strip issue, and another question comes to mind. If the developer can't buy that five-foot strip of land that crosses the end of Hickory Nut, can that developer apply to the city and/or county under eminent domain to take it? Of course, with eminent domain, there'd be a proffer of payment to the owner of that. So basically, that's our opposition point. You know, the residents aren't wholly against development there. Some are. So thank you very much, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Fraseno, and my apologies for butchering your name.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charles Hansen. And Leslie Cooper.
My name is Chuck Hanson. I live 1420 Ellis Road. I was here about 10 years ago, I think, with Mayor Bell, who was still the president, when we stopped that apartment building conflicts in the 17 acres just south of where the proposal for the Rigsby's. I knew Mrs. Rigsby and took care of her. She was 96 when she passed. My only concern is, we don't know anything about what the townhouses are going to look like. We don't know the value of the townhouses, and I'd like to bring to the attention, I'm a little nervous and...
That's okay.
And I made some notes about that. But Mayor Bell was so nice, and, you know, he let me speak about the truck traffic. And he said that there's not supposed to be any truck traffic on Ellis Road. Now, if you have 200 people, 200 in the townhouses coming out of there, and not, and I almost got hit when I first moved into my house at 1420 in 1997, because it's a country road and everything, and I know I got hit by a truck, and all the cement trucks. The road has been paved over twice, and it's torn up again. And that's the one thing I want, and the speeding on Ellis Road, that's another thing that I'm worried about, somebody coming out and getting hit with all of this. And at our meeting in Bethesda Church, they said that there was going to be 200 townhouses on the east side, and then 200 townhouses where the Rigsby House is and the Pond is on the other side. Today, now they're only saying there's only going to be 200. That's a question I've got.
Okay. Just checking to see whether Leslie, are you together? Okay, thank you. Then Leslie wants her time, so thank you very much.
Okay. I am Leslie Cooper. I live at 1422 Ellis Road. I moved here about five years ago to attend vet school at North Carolina State, and now I'm a veterinarian and a contributing member to the community. So I understand that the development is just a way of life, and especially living in a growing city, it's going to happen. And I guess if I had my wish, I would want it to stay exactly how it is, because it's a beautiful area and a beautiful bit of green space. It's a relief from the hustle and bustle of the city, but I know that that's not the way cities work. So I would like to ask that in planning this site, that we keep in mind that there are people who live in these neighborhoods already, who have gotten used to the quiet and the green space around them, and I would like to, as much as possible, preserve those, especially as I live directly beside where this development will be. So maintaining the buffers, maintaining privacy, so that my experience of a single-family home is not impacted by living next to multiple townhouse units. I would like that to be part of your consideration. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then the last individual I have is Emily Struthers.
My name's Emily Struthers. You often see me over there. I'm currently taking off my planning hat and putting on my neighbor hat. I live at 2316 Rota Drive, adjacent to this property. I just wanted to take a minute and talk about some things that I know in this area, as a neighbor specifically. This area is a great place if you can and want to rely on a personal vehicle, and I do. I'm lucky in that sense. The site is located one mile from a bus stop. It's one mile from solid bike lanes and the Riddle Road Trail that connects the Tobacco Trail, which is a bikable distance to downtown. But you can't use those, given the cross-section of the existing road. It's just, it's not safe. And so I just want to take this moment to highlight the need for consideration in areas like this for additional bike and pedestrian infrastructure. I understand that this extends beyond the location of this specific rezoning site, but I want to go on record to emphasize the need for improved bike and pedestrian infrastructure as we consider the comprehensive plan and how we spend our funding. Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm normally reading from a script or a PowerPoint. This is a little bit different for me. So the other thing that I just wanted to highlight as a neighbor is, considering the many recent developments in this area, I just want to put out there that I'd like to see developers consider a more site-specific approach that preserves unique site features like wetlands, mature trees, established tree lines, that tell the story of the site and kind of make sure that the neighbors don't feel like their slate is being wiped clean for a new product. We can have new housing, and we can also have preserved site-specific development, and I'd like to encourage that among developers and designers. I thank you for the opportunity to speak as a neighbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, I do not have any additional individuals who have signed up to speak. I'm going to double-check just to make sure, are there any other individuals who would like to speak to this particular issue? Oh, my goodness, they are okay. I think we would... Honey, are you speaking for? A little housekeeping. Are you speaking? If you will proceed to the mic and go ahead and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Brad Broogie. I also live at 2316 Rota Drive. I'm not opposed to developments being added to the site behind us. My main concern is being able to continue to enjoy my property while it is being developed. So with all the developments that are going in, typically, all of the trees get wiped down all the way up to the border, or all the way up to the property line, which creates a lot of noise, smells, distractions, and I feel like that would make it very difficult to actually be able to enjoy what is currently my backyard. And I'm speaking of my property itself not extending into the currently forested area. So I think that is my primary concern at this time, is that I realize that there will be a buffer, but if they mass grade the site, then they're going to grade up to the property line and then replant a couple of twigs in its place, which don't, can't really replace a 60-foot tree. So I guess that's all that I had to say.
Thank you so much. And Camille Hamlet.
Hi, Camille Hamlet, 132 Sherman Court. I just wanted to bring up when it was discussed that a minimum of 40% single-car garage, and I would like it to be considered that there be more double garages, because we at, in Winsford at the Park, they're all double garages, and of course, very few people actually park in them, and they park in their driveway. But a lot of people park on the street because there's more than two cars, and so you get a lot of street parking, which of course, we aren't supposed to have with our HOA, but we do anyway, and the city can't enforce it. And so that's going to happen there, too. And it's going to become a cut-through for people that maybe live in Winsford, and they're going to be cutting through this neighborhood. And if you have a lot of single-car garages, especially on the weekends, you're going to have a ton of cars on the street, and that's going to create issues, because we already have issues at Winsford with this. And so I'm speaking from experience, and we have two-car garages. And if you're doing cut-throughs, I know that there are a lot of single-car garage townhomes that have been built over at Ellis at the Park, the Ashton Woods Development, as well as the Ryan Builders that is on Ellis already near Riddle. But those aren't pass-through streets. And this new development is going to be a pass-through street for people coming down Ellis and getting over to Winsford, and maybe even cutting over onto So High. And so I think two-car garages, so that we get less cars parking on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Since, oh, there is another individual who is waving. If you would come forward, please. Is there anybody else that I want to make sure that we...
...should be tested by first. Here you go, Pam.
Thank you. I also own a house on Rota Drive, 2304 Rota Drive. I bought the house two years ago because of the woods. It needed a lot of work, but I liked the neighborhood. It was quiet. It was a dead-end road, and it was all woods in the back. And so we finally got it cleared out, and so about a half-acre, and I have bees and chickens back there. And so I appreciate the quiet, and I agree with what he said. You know, I don't mind the added-on houses. I don't mind the change. I think it'll be a nice change to the area, but I think there was a 10-foot barrier. So I agree to keeping the big trees. I mean, it's a lot of woods, and I know you guys said you appreciated the park scene and the tree scene, so maybe agreed not to tear everything down completely, so that we can still have those, the woods and the area back there, and not be kind of butted up with a five-foot fence, and not have to, like, look out my backyard and be sitting there with chickens and bees and massive apartments or townhouses right up behind the property. And it is quiet, you know, even with 147 being there and all of the woods in between, we don't still hear a lot of the highway. So it'd be nice to kind of keep that quietness in the woods, and so I'd appreciate that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Okay, my applicant is waving. Okay, Tim?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like the opportunity to respond to a few of these questions, if that's acceptable?
Yes, that will be fine, because we were going to really ask you quite a few questions anyway, but go ahead.
Okay, all right. So Hickory Nut does extend to a pump station at the bottom of that, that is a dead-end road. We will have to, at the time of site plan and construction documents, we'll have to work with city engineering to determine, city engineering, planning, and transportation, all of them, to determine exactly what's going to be required with that pump station at that time. If the pump station will come offline, then yes, if gravity sewer will be connected. As for the gentleman asked a question about if this, if we can't find the landowner, and we've already started reaching out to that landowner, however, if we can't find that landowner and have the ability to purchase that land, if the city will purchase that, that's something that we'll have discussions with the city at time of site plan. We did have transportation, and myself have already had a lot of conversations about that, so they may be able to speak on that as well. The question came up about the value of the home prices, price-value of the townhomes. We are working for the landowner in this case, so there's not a developer involved. So I don't fully know exactly what they will start at, but with the experience that I had working in Durham and the general knowledge of Winsford at the Park and projects in the area, they most likely will be starting in the mid-250s. But that is, again, there's no developer involved, so I have to be a little careful on exactly how I answer that question. I do want to clarify the total number of units. We did, our first initial smittle did have a total of 200 units, so I do apologize if there was confusion at the meeting, but it is 200 units total, not 200 on one side and 200 on the other. It is a maximum of 200 units for the entire project. The, okay, keep going. Okay, thank you. There were some questions about the green space and keeping some of the natural vegetation. We'll, again, working with the homeowner, some of these comments, actually, some of these residents did reach out to me today, and I do appreciate that, a little bit of heads up, so thank you for those who did, or prior to this meeting tonight. I was not able to get ahold of the landowners today to be able to talk to them and discuss that about them, so some of these questions, we're just going to have to dig into a little bit more detail between the Planning Commission meeting tonight and the City Council, but we'll look into those a little further. There are, on the adjacent to Rota Drive, there is no landscape buffer that is required. The UDO actually has a zero buffer required. We did go ahead and provide a 10-foot buffer, but if I understand the residents tonight, they want a little bit more potential natural, so we'll look into that a little bit further Single-car garages, that was a request from multiple of the Planning Commission members in prior meetings to this project, to this hearing tonight. So we want to provide a balance, not all two-car garages and not all one-car garages. So we want to provide a balance to not have the monotonous double garage door and a small entrance into the home itself. So having the ability to have that mix of garage doors allows for a mix of product and a little bit better of, when the community is walkable with our block lengths, to let the residents enjoy that a little better. So if there's any other questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can close the public hearing now and give our commissioners an opportunity to speak. So do I have commissioners who have questions? I'll start to my right. No? I will start to my, okay, I'll start with Commissioner Lowe, followed by Commissioner Baker, and then Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the citizens expressed concern about a sewage lift station. What is your view or take on that?
Tim Seivers, Harvard Associates, again. Great question, and sorry if I didn't clarify that. So they're at the Rota, sorry, not Rota Drive, Hickory Nut Drive.
Madam Chair, can we show a map while we talk about this?
Sure. Sure.
Yes.
So, there we go. So it's, it's this drive right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are you able to see that? If I can make it bigger. All right. At, the, the topography of this road comes from left to right. So this is, this is, you know, heading downhill here. So these homes are at the bottom of this road. The sewer, it, there is a gravity sewer that runs and there's a pump station that sits right here in the right-of-way of Nick Hickory Nut Road. That pump station then pumps it back to the end of this road into a gravity, into a gravity system. So what our project would be doing if engineering and if we're able to work through the question of that five-foot strip is if that lift station is to come offline, there will no longer be that pump station and all the residents along Hickory Nut Drive would then connect through a gravity sewer connecting down through our project heading towards Ellis Road. So we'll be able to remove that lift station, but that all depends on what happens with that five-foot strip of land. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Baker?
So we know that street trees are critical in providing shade and reducing heat island effect and their impact on carbon emissions and air quality and improving public health and quality of life and protecting pedestrians from moving vehicles and creating more walkable streets, especially when they're placed between the sidewalk and the curb. So a question for you, Tim. We also know that there's a huge racial and income disparity between places that have street trees and places that do not have street trees. My question for you, Tim, is what's the number of trees that there are going to be in this? This is a pretty large development. What are the number of trees that there are going to be between the curb and the sidewalk?
Between the curb and the sidewalk would be zero.
Okay. So pedestrian deaths are another major problem in Durham and across the state and the number keeps rising. There's only one way to reduce pedestrian traffic accidents and that's why slowing vehicles. And two very effective ways of doing that is by ensuring the appropriate width of the pavement and also ensuring that at street intersections, you have a tight curb radius. And I'll go into that in just a moment. So best practices, we call for a, a street width with pavement from 28 to 32 feet. It provides about seven feet on each side for on-street parking and then about nine feet in each direction for vehicles. You could have even less than that and many of our older neighborhoods have less than that. If you have more than that, people are going to go at higher speeds. Pedestrian gets hit at 20 miles per hour. Nine times out of 10, they survive. 30 miles per hour, 50% of the time, they do not survive. So we want to ensure the proper street widths in, in whenever we build new streets in all of our new neighborhoods. And we also want to build streets with the appropriate width to reduce the cost of, of street development, street maintenance and reduce the, the burden of taxpayer-funded maintenance and also to reduce the amount of impervious surfaces that we have in our communities. So my question for you, Tim, is what is the, what is the width of, of most of the streets that, from your development?
So the widths will be, well, final determination will be done at time of site plan. It depends on how many units are on those roads.
Okay.
Typically, they'll range from 26 to 33.
Thirty, 26 to 33?
Correct.
And that's with on-street parking on both sides?
The small, the, the smaller width would be no parking. The larger widths are on-street parking on one side. And those are required or are provided to us through the reference guide of development that the city of Durham has.
And why, why is it that you're not putting street trees into this development?
So, so let me clarify that. There will be street trees in the development.
Why, why is it that you're not putting street trees in the appropriate location, which is between the sidewalk and the curb?
So the city of Durham requires the street trees to be behind the sidewalk. So they're outside of the right-of-way. There's many reasons that the city has for, for that. And that, that's a better question for city planning or engineer.
Yep. Thank you. So best practices for curb radii is something between five and 15 feet. This is something that we see in a lot of our older neighborhoods. Very, very tight curb radii. And that reduces the distances that pedestrians need to cross the street. It also slows down vehicles when they're turning at intersections. So five to 15 feet is very, very important. Tim, what is the curb radii that you're required to build in your development?
I looked this up earlier because I knew you were going to ask this, sir. I believe it is 25.
25 to 30.
Recommended and 30-foot required or some, 25 to 30-foot, correct.
So that's way too wide. So we know that critical elements of neighborhoods and built environments are building frontages. They're arranged to support people or they are arranged to support cars and traffic. And so we see it in our older neighborhoods, on-street parking, recessed garages and garages that are behind the front of the home. We see it in rear alleys and, and access to rear alleys, accessory dwelling units, garages that have access from the rear alleys. And we see homes with front porches. And that's actually, actually very critical for pedestrian-oriented environments. It increases the eyes on the street, increases the safety of the street and the safety of our neighborhoods. In many of our newer neighborhoods, we know that the garage is the predominant feature. We know that neighborhood streets are sort of dominated by that, by that garage. And I think you mentioned the, the limiting 40% for single, single-car garages, which, which was actually not one of my, which is not, actually not one of my requests, but that's, that's okay. So, so when you walk down the street and the garage is sort of the predominant street feature, it, it actually reduces the, the pedestrian-oriented nature of, of streets and actually has an impact on how walkable a community is. So I'm wondering if there are any other commitments that you were considering that would create a more pedestrian-oriented environment besides having the snout-nosed house, the car-dominated frontage?
I appreciate your comments tonight, sir. We'll, we'll look into those further, but not at this time.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
So I'm a little confused still about this whole lift station and the five-foot strip. Seems to me if there's a five-foot strip and the, and the end of Hickory Nut Drive doesn't actually achieve the boundary line here, the, does the ordinance still require a connection at this point? Because we've had this come up before, this, this divider strip.
Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. This is probably a team effort here with Erleem, but, so the ordinance does require that they would have to provide a stub to the property line if there is an impediment like the five-foot gap. And there would not have to be a physical connection there.
So they have to show a stub to that property?
Right.
And, but they don't actually have to provide the connection because they don't own the land?
Correct.
The, the street doesn't get close enough to do it. And while we're standing here, this is something that's just come up today that I, that's probably come up 1,000 times, but I never thought to ask about it. So on Hickory Nut, as the gentleman said when I was out there yesterday, it's a street with ditches. And then presumably the streets on the inside of the project will not be streets with ditches. If this were, if a connection were to be made at this point, how do we do that? How do you transition from one form of street stormwater management to another?
So good engineering, I guess, is the best way to answer that, sir. So, so at the end of, we'll look at the drainage patterns and where those ditches at the end near the pump station, where they're discharging to and make sure they're discharged either through our street system or around our street system. But that'll be done at time of site plan and, and construction documents, but it just comes down to good engineering.
Yeah, but, so give me an example of good engineering.
So if they, if those, you know, everything is heading down, is heading towards the east there at the end of Rated Drive, we will look at that topography and have surveys done of that topography and make sure we can either capture that stormwater, whether it's in additional swales and to direct that to the stream or through a storm conveyance system as in stormwater pipes to direct that through the stream and then also slow it down and do the stormwater requirements that are needed for the city.
All right, well, thanks. That's a big help. And then I have another general question, probably for staff. So while we're looking at, at the map, the, the development plan map.
It is.
It's, it's on our screen, but it's not on.
Whoops, it was on your screen.
Any of those will do. As a matter of fact, go back to that context, ma'am. I guess it was zoning.
That one?
Yeah, so, well, that one's not much help, but, so we have running in here a stream and it looks like there is some sort of, of easement for power or something that runs through there that cuts off the back half of your property on the, on the eastern side.
Along NC 147?
Yes, so it's the part that you've got identified as a tree save area.
That's correct.
And then there is a similar area like that at the end of Rada Drive. In other words, Rada Drive doesn't go underneath whatever that right-of-way is there. And what kind of right-of-way is that? Is that sewer?
At the end of?
I mean, an easement, there's an easement that cuts across your property and continues across the neighborhood.
Continues to the north there behind Rada. That, that is a Duke power, power easement.
Oh, that's a power easement.
That's correct, yes.
So one of the things that concerns me about this is we create these little pockets of undeveloped land that get reserved usually as a project-by-project matter of convenience. But I was wondering if staff could tell me with regard to the, if, if there is one for Rada Drive, do we know what disposition might be made of the property that is on this development plan? It's got a 15 on it. And I'm sure the 15 is for, is a notice purpose. So at the end of Rada Drive, on the other side of the power easement, there is a piece of unused land that backs up to 147.
It, it's privately owned, vacant, but privately owned, so I don't.
It's not subject to a development plan that requires it to be undeveloped that you're aware of?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That helps. And so I'm kind of, that's it for my questions. While Mr. Baker is able to deal with granules that I will never be able to deal with, I am always persuaded by some of the things that he says. But one of the things that he got to say first is I'm a big believer, too, in this whole notion of, of not dominating our residential subdivisions, whether they're townhouses or single-family homes with garages. I hate the whole ideas. The message that it sends is this is where cars live and they keep their people in the back. And I think it should be the other way around. Houses should present a, a human facade and not an automobile facade. And I appreciate the, the commitment to mix up the garages a little bit because I, when I drive around out in this area where a great deal of resi, new residential development is, is going on. And I think of, and some of it is, in my opinion, pretty reasonably attractive, the designers have worked really hard. But I hate the dominate, the domination of the entire front of the house with the whole automobile thing. And the, the woman who was talking about double garages versus single garages is right. I was amazed at how few people actually seem to use their garages. Their, their little short driveways are filled up with cars and then they've got, still they've got the double garage. And, and this brings me around to the thing that I realize you don't have an end developer here and that this is a rezoning for a landowner who intends to sell the property. So the purpose of the rezoning is, is to enhance its marketability and its value in the marketplace. I just don't see giving, I've been cautioned to speak into the mic. I don't see giving these types of rezonings special consideration. I would like to see some site-specific planning here. I like to see where we can impose good design commitments. We should be imposing good design commitments. We should have tables of materials and we should have some commitments that give people some reasonable expectation of what these units are going to look like. I like the idea of front porches, realizing that if they all had the same front porches, that would be just as monotonous as if they all had the same garage things. So these are things that worry me here. It is a better plan than the one that, that I first became familiar with. I like the additional proffers. I'm a big believer that when we build projects like this, especially if it's going to be a monotype project here where it's all townhouses, I like the idea that we have designed open space that is recreational or attractive, a garden or a playground or something like that. And I appreciate the committed element there. I am probably going to vote no on this, depending upon what other commission members say. I could be persuaded one way or the other. I think this with just a little bit of tweaking could be better. I am concerned about, I see going from 5.7 units an acre down to, especially on Rada Drive and at the end of Hickory Nut Drive, I think we could spare a little land and make a little bit better buffering than the 10-foot buffer with the opacity that's been offered, realizing that our code doesn't require much and what's being offered is more than the minimum. I still think we could do a little bit better and make this a happier transition for everybody involved. There's a lot of space here and it seems like we could, we could do that. I appreciate all the people from Rada who spoke. I drove down your street yesterday for the first time in my life. I promise not to make a habit of it. But like I said, I, I understand why you value what you have and I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation that when new developments come in nearby, that some sort of transitional buffering be provided, something more than a 10-foot strip. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Besby.
Thank you. I had a question for Mr. Seivers as well. And I'll echo Commissioner Miller in terms of the, appreciating a lot of the proffers that have been made and, and the additional ones that came this evening as well. My main question was about the 10-foot, the 10-foot buffer along behind Rada Road. And you said you'd be willing to, to work with the neighbors as this moved forward, which I appreciate, but that's not an answer that I ever like hearing because I'm being asked to vote tonight. And so I know you're honorable and I know you'll stick to that commitment, but can you give us more detail about what kind of buffer you might be able to explore with the neighbors?
So, so there's a couple of different options here. The concern I heard from the neighbors was more, you know, one, I appreciate them speaking, speaking up and, you know, speaking to the detailed items that they're for and against. So a lot of them said they're not necessarily against the development overall, some of them may, you know, did, but they specifically said, I would like more information or more on this one specific item. So I do appreciate that. You know, I'm going to have to go back and talk to the landowners is what it comes down to, but some things that we can explore are just, you know, a larger-planted buffer. Some things that we can explore are, you know, the concern was during construction. So do we keep a buffer during construction? And then when, you know, further along during, you know, the concern was during mass grading. So further along in the process, then can that buffer be removed? So there's some options that we have through good design requirements as, as Commissioner Miller's talked about for the look of the homes. We can do that through the site construction sequence as well. So those are the items I want to explore with the homeowner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Durkin?
And just to follow up on that, I, you don't have to go up again, but also just wanting you to explore the option of leaving some of the established tree growth in place for the long term and not just during construction. Because when you drive around and look at developments like this that are cleared in full and it's really kind of depressing to watch them knowing that no real trees are planted to replace what was taken away. And there's just small trees that are put where you have the tree coverage asterisks on your development plan. So you could talk to them about preserving at least on a boundary or some capacity, some of the larger established trees, understanding that you can't just build around them, but along the buffer that would protect some of the rural characteristic of the area.
Okay, I'll discuss that with them, but I do want to clarify that we are providing a 20% tree save. So there will be at least a 20% natural tree save along this area.
Can you clarify on the development plan where that would be?
So those, those are, those are the stars. Those are those asterisks. That is correct.
Do you know what kind of tree growth is there? Do you know what kind of tree growth is there now? Are those places where more established trees are, or are they smaller?
Those areas are more established trees, yes.
Okay. But they're not along... They're just the only boundary are the parcel 16 on Rada Drive and then down where the higher-density townhomes are.
That's correct. So, that's why I want to look into those a little bit more detail.
I think increasing that would help alleviate some of the concerns raised by the neighbors.
Thank you.
Are there other commissioners who would like to speak? Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So, thank you to everyone who came out this evening and shared your thoughts on this particular proposal as well as the applicant. Just harking back to some initial questions and the responses that were provided, it seems to be the case that in some of these instances where, regarding the development plan, is the applicant doing what is required? And it seems that, Commissioner Baker, what you're saying is like, that's not good enough. So, I think we're at a point where increasingly getting to points where we're looking at these requests, and it's not... The applicant is doing what they're required to do, but now we're having to take a stance on, is that good enough from our charge of is this in the best interest of long-term viability of Durham? So, I think that some of this is embedded in what we're reviewing tonight. My particular thoughts regarding this development plan is it echoes some of the sentiments that have been shared tonight. One is that without a developer being able to propose, like, what's actually going to go within this relatively large site is kind of makes me uncomfortable in the sense of we're having to hope for the best. And being someone who drives along, I have the fortune of driving along Ellis Road during different times of the day. It's like, while that road is not, like, near full capacity based on the information, that actually makes it... More cars will get on that road because of the development that's going on. But, you know, it's the fact that it's not near capacity means that cars go fast. Like, you go down during different times of the day, and cars zoom. And so, when we're talking about making it like pedestrian or walkability of communities like this in Durham, I think the safety issue is something that we really should take note of because, you know, we're not necessarily putting in the mechanism to slow down traffic. And at the same time, we're putting more vehicles on the road. And so, I say that just, you know, I came in thinking I was going to be clearly in favor of moving forward with this, but it becomes more concerning when we're thinking about some of the things that make the quality of life for projects like this congruent with the long-term vision that we've all been talking about for Durham and such. You know, I'm on the fence now, but I'm going to see if there are a few more comments that may sway me one way or the other.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Turk.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, thanks to everyone for coming out, and thanks to the applicant. I do think I want to echo some of what's already been said. There are a number of commitments in here that are above and beyond. I mean, we don't typically see traffic calming devices. That's something that our Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission always pushes for and gets, you know, pushback from developers and applicants, and I do appreciate that. So, you know, there are some commitments in here that I think are great. I think the single-car commitment is good, the single-car garage is good. I just... There are... I guess I'll ask a question to staff very quickly. The applicant mentioned that the tree save area was 20%. Is that, I mean, is that above and beyond the requirement? Or is that...
No, that is the requirement, which is what they're providing.
Okay, so if I'm reading the development plan correctly, the requirement there is 20%. And then, the requirement for open space is 16%, and that's what they're providing. Okay.
Right.
So, that is one area where I'm not... I don't... I wouldn't say that you're going above and beyond. And I think that's one of the concerns that I'm hearing from other commissioners, you know, including the buffer. And so, I understand that, you know, you're trying to get 200 units on here, or you're trying to get a number that will be, I guess, attractive to a buyer. But, you know, we are now grappling with these two seemingly competing goals that we have, which is affordability. So, we want, you know, we want more houses in Durham. We want more supply. But we also want to, you know, preserve our green space. We want to address climate change issues. And so, I guess I'm asking you... You know, I can see where a lot of us probably would be supportive of this. And I even think that a lot of the neighbors would be supportive because I didn't really hear a lot of outright opposition. And it seems like if you can do a little bit more in terms of the buffering, in terms of the preservation of, you know, trees, I think you can go a long way in convincing us to vote in favor of this. I will just echo what Commissioner Busby said, which is I don't like... I don't doubt that you will speak and you will work with planning staff between now and city council meeting, but I don't like voting in favor of something anymore whenever, you know, we just have a verbal commitment because, like you said, you know, we're asked to vote on what we have in front of us. And I think that our comments to city council reflect what we see currently. And so, that's... Those are some of the comments. I guess I would like you to maybe to... Yeah, the question I guess I have is, is there any way to reduce the number of units? Or is there any way to maybe keep the number of units but preserve more green space? You are doing some interesting things. I appreciate the commitment to the park, the dog park. And I haven't seen that, and so, I think that's great. But anything else that you could work on in the next two cycles? Because I would like to see this case continued, but I understand that you probably don't want that. But I'll... Yeah, I'll let you answer that, and then, yeah, thanks.
Tim Seivers, Horvath Associates, again. So, thank you for your comments. I do want to clarify that, yes, as of right now, the landscape requirement for tree coverage, for tree save, is 20%. This project was originally submitted back in, if I can... It was December of 2018. At that time, there was no requirement for that. It could be all tree replacement, so all the trees could be removed. But that's been a comment... That's been part of there since our initial submittal. I believe that landscape ordinance was changed three to four months ago. So, that's still showing in here. So, at the time of initial submittal and throughout this project, we have been going above and beyond. So, what happened there is we went above and beyond, and the ordinance caught up. And now, we're being asked again to go above and beyond. So, there's a little bit of give there, so I hope you understand that. But we will go back and look at that again. A part of the additional above and beyond is that landscape... Excuse me, that landscape buffer along Rada. Now, there's no requirement there, even with the new landscape ordinance. And we are providing a 10-foot permanent buffer that will remain. So, yes, we will go back and look at this again to see if there's any opportunity to increase that. But I did want to make it clear that it was increased at the time of initial submittal over top of the ordinance requirements at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll see if other commissioners, you know, are open to the idea of a continuance or if we think that it's a good idea because oftentimes, we ask for it, and nothing happens in the interim. But it seems like there may be some compromise here or some compromises that can be made. And I guess I'll ask that to the applicant as well, whether you would like to do that. I guess, do you think that you will be able to add a few things in the next one or two cycles to be able to address some of these things?
I do think we will definitely go back and look at these. I've met with some of you, you know, I've built the trust, so... But I do understand that you have to vote on what's in front of you tonight. I would ask that we proceed with the vote tonight for a few reasons. This project, as you can see, was submitted originally in December of 2018, partly slowed down on our half. Last month, this project did have an accidental human error by city staff that delayed it another 30 days. So, we've already gone through one deferral for you, Will, sir. So, I prefer to be able to have... Proceed with the vote tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Durkin.
I have a question for staff. On the development plan, there's the tree coverage percentage, but it doesn't... And if you can point it out to me if it's there, I don't see a requirement for tree save. I just see a tree coverage requirement. How do we differentiate between new tree with a 20% tree coverage percentage versus retention?
Hi, Mike Stock with the Planning Department. So glad to talk about it in a zoning case. So, tree coverage is actually made up of a combination of tree save and tree replacement. If they're only saying they're going to be doing 20% tree coverage then... And it might be something they might just need to clarify, but it would have to be all tree preservation because that's the only number that you can achieve at 20% without doing tree replacement. And as Mr. Seivers indicated, that the ordinance has been changed that they have to do tree conservation or tree save first before they get into tree replacement aspects.
Okay, so that my concern is covered already in the UDO. Okay, great. Thanks.
Commissioner Lo, yes?
Thank you. Just for sake of clarification, someone had mentioned earlier about saving 60-foot trees. So, when I'm looking at this tree save, is there any consideration given to the size of the tree? Like, the height or the diameter of the tree? Or is it just the location of the tree?
Thank you, Commissioner Lo. Jamie Schwaeder with Parker Poe. It's evaluated for the location, and I would like to just point out on the development plan where the majority of that tree save area is, and then compare it to the aerial so we can answer two questions, yours and Commissioner Durkin. So, if you can see the screen on that eastern portion of the site that's between 147 and Ellis Road, we have the two asterisks indicating the tree save area. We also have a riparian area there. If we compare that to the aerial, it's kind of hard to see with the hatching from the staff report, but most of the significant tree growth existing on the site is within that same area. So, the area that is maybe four or five parcels of Rada Drive, from the midpoint of Rada Drive over to 147 is kind of where that growth starts. And that's approximately the same place on the development plan. You can see in the aerial there, as we get closer to Ellis Road, that area is already naturally cleared. And so, that's where the development pocket is on this site. So, we've already kind of allocated where the development will go on the site in accordance with where that existing tree growth is because most of those trees exist on that eastern portion. Now, the slice you see down the center of that eastern portion is the Duke power line easement that has to stay clear due to their easement rights, but it's already cleared. So, most of that tree growth in the tree save area is already overlapping with significant tree growth. The same is true where it exists on the west side of Ellis Road, and that also aligns with some of the riparian buffers. So, I'll just flip back. There's the aerial where you can see the tree growth. And then, there's the development plan. So, the riparian buffer kind of slices through the western portion of the site, but most of the tree growth on the eastern portion is where we have that tree saved area anyway.
Yes, Commissioner Baker.
Two quick things. First, I want to acknowledge the 600-foot maximum block length. That is a best practice, although I'm fascinated by the way that it's calculated in this case because I think that there are going to be a lot of very large blocks. One in particular is the Hickory Nut, Ed Cook Road, So High Drive, and Zante Current block, which is, and I Google mapped it, it's going to take eight minutes to walk along the distance of one side of the block. So, if you want to walk around the block, it's going to take you half an hour. And so, if we build outer city that way, it's going to have major implications for how people are able to get around. It already is having implications for how people are and are not able to get around. So, that's one thing to be thinking about. And also, the single-car garage, I hope you don't think that that was something that I requested because that... Yeah. So, if it's something that other commissioners requested, then that's appreciated because for me, I would be satisfied with the garage being recessed or in the back. That's important, not just for Nate Baker, but for sort of best practices for pedestrian-oriented development. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'll be really quick. So, Tim, just, I was reading one of the comments provided by a citizen. Let me see, his name is Kyle Marion. But he noted that you shared with, I guess, some group or something that initially you wanted to develop a 3.3 unit. And I'm assuming that this for this project because he didn't... He just said a project on the east side of Durham. But he said that the planning commission encouraged you to increase the density. Okay, great, because I was just trying to...
Not on this project.
Okay, great. I was just trying to make sure I got the question right. No question.
Thank you. Are there other commissioners who would like to ask questions? Are there any additional questions? If not, Commissioner Al Turk.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for the applicant. I want to just ask you why you wouldn't put the garages in the back like Commissioner Baker suggests, just out of curiosity.
We haven't researched that far enough at this point. The layouts that we've done to date have been with front garages for unit count, which helps set the density. So, we would... That's just how we've proceeded at this point. That also plays into Wentzford Park. They also have front entrance garages. We were actually... Our Horvath Associates was the civil engineering firm for Wentzford Park. We went through a lot of iterations on that project. At one point, that project did include rear alley or alley-loaded townhomes. And for the product and for the area, the developer at that time realized it just didn't work for the location. A lot has changed since then, but primarily to help it kind of look like one development between the two. We want to try to keep things consistent through the area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Are there additional questions? If there are no additional questions, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion in this case.
Okay.
This is one of those cases where I'm... This much change along some of the lines that we were talking about, not necessarily all of them, some of the lines we're talking about, would change a potential no vote to a yes vote. I'm extremely encouraged by the idea that we might be able to improve the buffer situation a little bit and look at extra design commitments. So, for that reason, even though, and I might feel differently if there was a developer... If there was a developer waiting to submit a site plan and ready to start moving dirt around, but there's not. This property is headed to the market, not to building. And so, under those circumstances, I'm going to make a motion that we delay this until our May meeting, our regularly scheduled May meeting, to give the developer and the neighbors an opportunity to bring us a slightly better project that would have my yes vote rather than the no vote that I might cast today. So, that's my motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Miller that we delay this item until our May meeting.
Continue.
Continue this item until our May meetings. I have a second by Commissioner Baker. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for a vote. Is there some unreadiness?
If I just have the ability to speak for a minute?
Yes.
I would, just because of the previous delays on this project and with these homeowners or the landowners, they've really encouraged me to try to get this vote tonight. So, I would... I understand what's in front of the board right now, but I would really encourage the board to take the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I currently have a motion on this table unless there's a substitute motion. I'm going to proceed with this. I'm going to proceed with this vote. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Madam? Go ahead.
Is there some unreadiness as far as this vote is concerned, the one that is currently on the table?
Can you clarify which vote is currently on the table?
To delay this item, I mean, continue this item until the May meeting. Are we clear on what we're voting on?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Al Turk?
No.
Vice Chair Busby?
Yes.
Chair Hyman?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Ketchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowe?
No.
And Commissioner McIver?
No.
Motion fails, four to eight.
Which means I need an additional motion to deal with this item, starting with the-
Plan amendment.
Future land use plan map amendment.
Madam Chair, I move that in case A180011, that we send it forward to, this would be the City Council, I believe. City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Al Turk, that we send item number A1800011, comprehensive future land use map amendment, to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Morgan? I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Al Turk?
No.
Vice Chair Busby?
No.
Chair Hyman?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Ketchin?
No.
Commissioner Santiago?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Lowe?
No.
And Commissioner McIver?
No.
Motion fails, 12 to zero.
May I have a motion for the second part of this?
Madam Chair, with regard to case Z180035, the zoning map change request in this Ellis Road case, I move that we send it forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Busby, that we send item number Z1800035, Ellis Road, and this would be a zoning map change forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Al Turk?
No.
Vice Chair Busby?
No.
Chair Hyman?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Ketchin?
No.
Commissioner Santiago?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Lowe?
No.
And Commissioner McIver?
No.
Motion fails, 12 to zero.
Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Excuse me, do you have to vote on the annexation as well?
No, we don't do the annexation.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Emily Struthers with the Durham Planning Department. I will be presenting case Z1900008, 3259 Rose of Sharon Road for zoning map change. I have received notice from the applicant that they are interested in continuing this. However, I will go ahead and do the staff presentation as we standardly would. It is a slightly abbreviated staff presentation. As Jamie indicated, we've had limited availability to access our resources, but you have the supporting documents in your, your item. So, the applicant for this case is Daniel Jewell of Culture Jewell Thames. The area of the request is 5.828 acres. It is one parcel located at 3259 Rose of Sharon Road. The applicant proposes to change the zoning from RS20 to residential rural with the development plan to allow for the use of a conference center slash retreat house, or that is as close as we could classify under the UDO, a wedding event venue. The future land use map is low-density residential, and the proposed request is consistent with this designation. Let's see. Your attachments in your staff report include an aerial map as well as the context map to refer more specifically with regards to what is in the area, but the site is located in the suburban development tier and the Ino River Watershed Protection Overlay District B, EB. The site contains an existing house believed to be built in 1922 and is adjacent to single-family houses as well as undeveloped land. The development plan identifies commitments, including that the, the conference center retreat house is the committed use, the existing house is to remain, and the existing barn is to be renovated, rebuilt, or expanded. New buildings or additions are committing to adopt vernacular similar to the existing house and/or barn. Apologize for that typo. The proposed development is consistent with comprehensive plan policies. The future land use map policies identified on the screen as well as in your staff report. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I do have the applicant Dan Jewell, who would like to speak at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. I am Dan Jewell, the applicant, 111 West Main Street in Durham. I'm here this evening asking for a two-cycle continuance, a 60-day continuance, and the reason is, my client, the owner of the property, the owner of the house, who has actually lovingly restored that house, if you had a chance to look at it, he has decided to sell the property. There is a contract to purchase, which is going through an examination period. That contract purchaser is not sure whether he wants to pursue what Mr. Knight was pursuing with this rezoning. He has a 30-day examination period. So, what we would like to do, if you would grant it to us and speed up your schedule a little bit this evening, is come back to you in two months if they decide to proceed with the rezoning, or we might withdraw the application before that. But that is my request tonight. And just to let you know, we had a neighborhood meeting last fall. We mined 25 emails of residents that were there, and we notified them all by email that it was our plan to do this tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion, then.
Is there anybody else that came to be heard?
Well, let's just see. He's the only person on my list.
You have, excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you have to actually open the hearing to continue it. You'll have to do that anyway.
Thank you. Okay, well, we will open the public hearing to see if there are any individuals who would like to speak to this issue. Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and then-
No, you leave it open.
Oh, that is, right, I'm sorry. It's a continuance, so we'll leave it open.
If there's a motion for continuance, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I'll move in case Z19008 that we continue this matter until our regularly scheduled meeting in May.
That would be May 12th, Mr. Miller, for the record.
Second.
See if I do better this time.
Thank you.
You're fine, I'm trying to help you out.
Motion by Commissioner Miller that we continue item number Z190008, and that is Rose of Sharon Road for two, a two-cycle continuance until the May 12th meeting. Second, did I have a second? Second by Commissioner Busby. All in favor of this motion? Let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyman, I'm sorry, Chair Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Ketchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Okay, 12 to zero.
Thank you. We're ready for the next item. Staff report, please, and that is the Leesville Road Assemblage.
I'm now presenting case Z1900025, Leesville Road Assemblage. The applicant, Tim Cyvers of Horvath Associates. The area of the request is 107.24 acres. The site comprises 10 parcels, and I want to clarify that it's 10, not 6. There is an error in the staff report under the site information, so clarifying 10 parcels located approximately at 6325 Leesville Road. The applicant proposes to change the zoning to planned development residential 3.236 from rural residential RR for 344 residential units. The future land use map designation is low-density residential, and the proposed zoning is consistent with the future land use map. A TIA was required for this project. And something else I can't read. The site is located in the suburban development tier in the Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District. You can reference the maps in your staff report more specifically. The aerial map in your staff packet shows the location of the request, highlighted in red. It is located north of Leesville Road. The site contains a few existing single-family houses but is otherwise undeveloped with the exception of an overhead utility easement. Areas to the south and west have experienced significant residential growth, courtyards at Andrews Chapel, Carolina Arbers, Fendal Farms. Areas to the north and east are more rural in character. The development plan identifies site access points, tree coverage area, location of building and parking envelope, stream crossings, riparian buffers, and project boundary buffers. Key commitments include use of townhouse and/or single-family, 5,000 linear feet of trail and transportation improvements. In addition, staff has received the following proffers. We've reviewed them and we found them to be legal and enforceable. I will try and read all of these on the small screen, but they're in front of you for reference. They propose to add duplex to the proposed unit types. That's under text commitment one. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $19,000 contribution to the Durham Public Schools. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $34,000 contribution to dedicated Durham Housing Fund, previously referenced as the Affordable Housing Fund. A minimum of 30% of the townhome units shall be limited to single-car bays or less. A minimum of the following shall be provided at the time of site plan: dog park, tot lot, disc golf, soccer play field. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, subject to determination by Go Durham and Go Triangle on the need for transit-related improvements at the time of site plans, submit or construct a pad slash bus shelter to Go Durham/Go Triangle specifications along Leesville Road adjacent to the site. And additionally, the average block length shall not exceed 600 feet. Block length shall be defined as the distance from the intersection to intersection or project boundary measured along the center line of the street. The proposed PDR 3.236 zoning designation is consistent with the current future land use map designation of low-density residential. The proposal is consistent with comprehensive plan policies. Outwind on the screen and in your staff report. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other policies and ordinances, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one individual who has signed up to speak, and that's Tim Cyvers.
Good evening again, Chair Hyman, members of the board. Tim Cyvers, Horvath Associates, 16 consultant place. Thank you, Emily, for the staff report, especially with the limited technology services over the last few days. As she mentioned, the rezoning tonight includes, the complete application includes a rezoning of 107 acres from RR to PDR 3.236. That is within the current future land use map designation. The package also includes an annexation of 114 acres, which I'll explain why the difference is in a few minutes. This project is located on the north side of Leesville Road, east of Doc Nichols Road, west of Olive Branch Road. Other developments in the area do include Del Webb, Carolina Arbers, and Fendal Farms. The project is a short bike ride from within about two miles of Briar Creek and about four miles to the Ravenstone Shopping Center. The proposed development plan includes the rezoning of the project area to PDR to allow the development of up to 344 units. These units can be townhomes or single-family, and as Emily mentioned earlier, we have also provided the commitment to duplexes. When looking at homes in this area within approximately a half-mile to a one-mile radius, the majority of these, the homes built are single-family and in the $350,000 range of starting prices. This development in front of you tonight, being mostly townhome units likely, will provide an additional product for the residents in the area with a starting price in the mid-200s. The development plan illustrates commitments to right-of-way dedication, landscape buffers, 20% tree preservation area or tree save, if you will, the maximum purveyce area of 70%, 344 units as a maximum for the entire project area, as well as access points out onto Leesville Road. A minimum of one traffic calming device will be provided, as well as 5,000 linear feet of trails within the development. Road improvements will be constructed along Leesville Road at both access points, as well as the intersection of Leesville Road and Chapel, excuse me, Leesville Road and Andrews Chapel Road. Bike lanes will also be provided along the site frontage. This development plan also does meet the Eastern Durham Open Space Plan, as indicated in the staff report. One example of that is the wildlife corridors that will remain within the stream buffers and the power line easements. The, the additional text commitments that Emily reviewed are, will be added to the development plan tonight if approved. She already reviewed those, but if you have any questions at the end of the presentation, I'll be happy to answer them. In closing, I do ask, one, sorry, one other thing. I did want to review that we did hold a neighborhood meeting, was held in the end of May, Leesville Road Baptist Church, which is an adjacent property owner. We did have about 15 members, 15 neighbors were at that meeting, plus about five of the church members. Their primary concerns were traffic, access to water, sewer, as well as the project timeline. So, after reviewing the rezoning process with these neighbors, informed them that the project will be required to complete road improvements. At that time, our traffic study had not been completed because it was a little bit before our submission. Our traffic engineer is here with us tonight, and if there's any specific questions on those items, he'll be available to answer them. We also discussed at the project, at the neighborhood meeting, about the water and sewer. This, there is an existing water line in Leesville Road. We'll be extending that along the project frontage to make the connections. The sanitary sewer is in the Searls Basin Southeast Regional Lift Station, so it is the new lift station that's under construction up near NC 98 and Sharon Road, excuse me, NC 98 and Kemp Road. So, the overall concern at those, the neighborhood meeting pretty well came off, a few specific concerns, but overall did not seem to fight the development in general, as we saw in the last case. So, in closing, I ask that you vote in favor of this rezoning. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any other individuals who have signed up to speak, but I'm going to check at this time to see if there are any other individuals would like to speak to this issue. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and give our commissioners an opportunity to ask questions. Do I have commissioners to my right who would like to speak? Commissioner Al Turk? Commissioner Busby?
Thank you, Chair. So, this is, I guess this is a question to other commissioners because we just voted 12 to zero against a, a case that's not very dissimilar to this one, right? It's, it's in the suburban tier, it's in a growing area, it has, you know, surrounding residential around it. It's, you know, the, some of the same types of commitments are being made here where it's, I think it's a nice effort, but maybe it's not as much as maybe we'd like it, we'd like to see. So, I'm just, I guess I, I'm, this is a, not a rhetorical question, you know, what, what is different about this case and, and why should we vote for this one? And, you know, one obvious difference here is that there are not neighbors against this, but there are lots of reasons why people come out or don't come out. So, I'm not sure that we have, we should base it just on that. So, I'm just really curious to hear from others what you think, but I'll, obviously, I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Turk. Commissioner Busby?
Mr. Cyvers, you had said you'd be willing to walk through your additional commitments again, and if you could-
Would you please?
That'd be helpful.
Sure.
Can we show them again?
I will try to get to, there we go, right there. That wasn't too bad. So, number one, prior to issuance of a certificate, certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $19,000 contribution to the Durham Public Schools. Number two- Number two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provide a one-time $34,400 contribution to Durham Affordable Housing Fund. I believe it's actually Dedicated Fund or whatever the correct terminology is, we'll work that out with planning. Number three, a minimum of 30% of the townhome units shall be limited to single-car bays or less. Four, a minimum of two of the following items shall be provided at the time of site plan. Dog park, tot lot, disc golf, soccer playfield. Five, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, subject to determination by Go Durham and Go Triangle on the need for transit-related improvements at the time of site plan, submittle construct a concrete pad or bus shelter to Go Durham/Go Triangle specifications along Leesville Road adjacent to the site. Number six, the average block length shall not exceed 600 feet, and we provided the definition of the block length. The city of Durham does not have a defined, a definition for block length, so we wanted to be very clear in what we're providing to you. And it goes on to say the block length shall be defined as the distance from intersection to intersection or project boundary measured along the center line of the street. And in addition, which I don't believe is actually listed on your sheet, is a revision to text commitment number one. The proposed development may include duplex, townhomes and/or single-family residential units, as well as permitted accessory units. So the word duplex is being added there, so it can either be duplex, townhomes, or, and/or, single-family. Do you have any specific questions on any of those? Or did you?
Number one, I just want to make sure I could absorb it, and you can see with the list, there's a lot.
There is, yes.
The question that I had previously, but I'm guessing it's been dealt with, the $19,000 contribution to the Durham Public Schools, is that based on the students that we believe will be added with the mix of duplex, townhomes, and single-family homes?
So with, and Emily, you know, the staff may be able to discuss, talk on this as well. With the city's internet and email and everything, I'm not sure if Emily actually even received this email. I wasn't able to talk with her before this meeting, but typically, there's a donation based on the number of student increase. This, I believe the number was 76, and that's based on full development of 344 single-family homes. We've had the conversation that cannot take place in this property, so it will be, you know, the mix are all townhomes. Because the, you know, the calculation that's in the staff is the 76, what we provided is $250 per student increase based on the 76 students.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, and in all honesty, looking back at the calculation based on our previous project of the 200 townhomes, it was a decrease. So we're picking a number at 250 units. We think that's well above and beyond what technically would be required if this was a commitment to all townhome developments.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are the other commissioners to my right who would like to speak? If not, Commissioner Baker, then Commissioner Low.
Hey, Tim, how many street trees are you planting between the sidewalk and the curb?
Come on, you know this answer, sir.
And that's because we don't allow you to.
That is correct.
So over 100 acres of land, it's to be developed, it's currently forest, and we do not allow the developer to plant street trees according to best practices. Yeah.
I apologize, Grace Smith, Land Department. I was hoping we could talk about this earlier, but things moved on and moved on, and maybe later in the evening when Mr. Stock is presenting Omnibus, he can explain this because he's not in the room right now, and he was gonna speak to that a few minutes ago. There is something in the works to address the situation that you're talking about, but he would have to speak to it. I'm not the project manager for that. And it's very involved, it's not just because we don't want them there, there are reasons why they're not there. So I would like for him to explain that to you later in the evening, if that's okay.
Yes.
I want to be sure that that gets on the record.
Yes. So there won't be, there won't be street trees as part of this, as part of this project, and hopefully we'll learn a little bit more about how we can change that. Also, the street width, we talked a little bit about that, the impact that that can have, the curb, radii, these are all continued concerns, everything that comes up before us all the time. And I don't know if folks watched the State of the City Address, Mayor Shul mentioned some recent amendments to increase the amount of sidewalk that's being constructed. I would remind you that that didn't come from, that wasn't born from council, that was born here, people talking about sidewalks over and over and over, and eventually changes were made. And so it continues to be important for us to discuss these important issues. So, Tim, I am interested, we know that transit can't be improved and fiscal responsibility can't be achieved without sort of dense neighborhoods with a mix of uses, civic uses like parks, playgrounds, plazas to strengthen our communities, small compatible deployment, office uses that are in walking and biking distance of homes. I think you mentioned grocery stores, which are, it sounds like two miles away, which is, people are not, are not going to be walking two miles to the grocery store, and other neighborhood-oriented service uses that provide the things that people need on a daily basis. So I'm curious, Tim, what are, are there any neighborhood-compatible employment and service uses that are planned for this 100, over 100-acre site?
Not right now. The, yes, the Briar Creek is about, it's a little over two, it's about two and a quarter, so easily accessed by bicycle or a good Saturday morning run, if you will. And the Ravenstone Shopping Center is about four miles away, so there are, there is the ability to access it, it's just not next door.
Okay, and we also know that neighborhoods, multi-generational neighborhoods especially would have a variety of housing types, would have townhomes, quadruplexes, small garden apartments, accessory dwelling units. This doesn't have to have anything more than one housing type for a full 100 acres.
No, it has to have two.
Does it?
It has to have one duplex.
Sounds like it doesn't.
No?
Sounds like it does not.
If there is a question, you either ask the applicant or be recognized to make additional statements, but right now...
I misunderstood.
What is the minimum number of residential, types of residential units that's required in this development?
This development could be 100% townhomes.
Okay.
Or any of the other options.
So I would just remind commissioners that this is currently in the county, so there's a lot of leverage on this property. Right now, if it were to develop, it would not be able to access water, sewer. So this is really an opportunity for the commissioners to be able to ask questions and make statements about our values, so, thank you.
Are there any other commissioners who would like to speak?
Yes.
Before I get to Commissioner Low. Yes, Commissioner Low?
Thank you, Chair. Just for the sake of my own understanding and clarification, bulletin number four says a minimum of 30% of the townhome units shall be limited to single-car bays or less. The "or less" part, that means zero car bays?
So, yes, sir, we want to qualify in there to provide the option if there, if a developer that wants to build townhomes that have parking or a parking lot, so there could be a townhome without a garage, that's what that qualifies for, the "or less."
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Having actually been to the site and quite familiar with the area, I actually, I like what's being proposed in terms of this development, and I guess I kind of have to say, as far as like sidewalks and things are concerned and the walkability of blocks, I'm a runner. So I appreciate a long block because I hate having to stop where the street meets to wait to see whether or not a car is coming because it's really harmful on my stride. So I appreciate longer blocks, and as far as trees on the street side, I would like to think that for those that don't walk a lot and want to pull out in traffic, they would need to see without a tree being there, because it's hard enough to see around mailboxes and the shrubbery that are at corners sometimes when you're trying to pull out, sometimes even a fire hydrant unless you're driving a truck. I think that we have addressed a lot of real concerns, and I think that this development probably works best there. It is a high-travel area. I know a lot of times if I want to cut through to get to Walmart, I'll take 98, pick up Olive Branch, cut straight across, and carpenter pond, it's a pretty decent area. I like it. I don't know about walkability, I'm definitely not walking two miles to get to the Walmart and carry anything back. Access to ACC Boulevard and the annex there and what they've done there is definitely helpful. There's a fire station that is relatively close that would be helpful in case of an emergency. I'm not sure about what ambulance service is there, but I know that in case of that type of emergency, because they are townhomes and would be attached units, the response time should be relatively quick, whether it's from Durham or if it's actually from the other side of the pond, which would be Raleigh. I think that consideration for garages and actually that the ability to have duplexes or a single-family would address a major issue and concern, and because it is so close to Briar Creek, there's a vast amount of shopping and restaurants in that area that are accessible that wouldn't normally be in other areas in which we're building, and clear-cutting tree preservation is always important to me because I appreciate anything that reduces runoff by providing impervious surfaces, and that includes sidewalks. So I think that this particular project within itself, you don't have a lot of design consideration restrictions from neighboring communities that are in the area because everything over there has its own flair, if you will, so I can't really see that there would be a lot of neighborhood, like, resistance towards this particular project. Probably also not a lot of neighborhood involvement in this project because it is an area that does need to grow, unlike a project we saw previously on Olive Branch that would have been, I guess, devastating because of the curvature of the road and just the infrastructure for the existing route, and because there is already so many developments out there, and it is a county project, I don't see why water, sewer, or anything else that you may want to add would be problematic in terms of accessing it would actually grant more of an actual, I guess you could say, resolution to a problem for any issues that existing residents would have in terms of their water and sewer, or their septic tank, or whatever they have in place. As far as transportation, I don't know that we have buses or anything that goes out there, but I guess if it would increase, I guess that would be helpful. Go Triangle would probably be best for those people that are commuting to Raleigh. I know it's going to be an exceptionally long bus ride into Durham if you're going into the RTP area, or if you're going into even Duke from 98 or 70 or Olive Branch, that's an exceptionally long ride, even for people that are taking 98 into Raleigh to catch 50, to cross over to the major Capitol Boulevard, pick up 64. And 98 has become problematic with people trying to avoid traffic or even being able to pick up 540. I think that the commuter aspect of it is, will be addressed by providing homes in this area because you increase access to 540 and you take some of that pressure off of 40 for people trying to get home, because you can always pick up Leesville Road on that end and cut across and still get home. So I think that it is a well-thought-out project, and to Commissioner Turk, I think what makes it different is because of its location, because you're, you have clearly the space to develop this project in this particular area, having driven through there several times, and it's already a lot of open space in this area because there aren't a lot of trees close to the surface. It's a lot of green space and just open grasslands, in opposed to what we saw in the previous case where there are a lot of trees there and neighbors that want to preserve that in a particular street scape. But Carpenter, Carpenter Pond Road and Olive Branch and even, it escapes me, it's a lot of green space, especially by that fire station, and even as you approach cross-sections, it's open area. So I can't say that a lot of tree cutting would occur or tree preservation for what's existing. Some of those trees are mature, and a lot of them, until you go further down towards ACC Boulevard, they're just, it just isn't a tree coverage area. So some tree planting would probably have to happen on behalf of the developer to encourage the type of landscapes that he's wanting to achieve.
Thank you.
That's the end of my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, Chair. So one thing I'm concerned about with this project is that this particular property does seem to have a lot of trees. And, you know, tree coverage is important, but it's also important not just having it, but how we have it. At this point, I'm only seeing it in the buffers. There's not really a commitment to really go beyond that in this development. And if you ask me, this is a pretty relatively small, developable property in terms of the number of units that we put here. So my, when I look at the aerial map in the area, you see these homes clustered very close together, and I'm concerned if we keep doing this in this area, we're promoting an urban heat island effect in a type of area that people expect greenery, in type of area that people expect more nature. And one of my questions for the applicant is, what's going to be the typical lot size for these homes? Are these just going to be on top of each other throughout the entire development and just have the trees surrounding it?
So as mentioned, this is most likely going to be a townhome development, so the townhomes will be connected. So yeah, there are, you know, the lot in general for a townhome lot is a smaller lot, yes. What that, what that does provide is kind of like what the UDO has as a conservation subdivision, so you're able to group your development and save areas that are outside of those areas. So you still are able to save your riparian buffers, and the riparian buffers, you know, we have 100-foot-wide riparian buffer on each side of the stream, but they, you know, can include storm easements or utility easements, but by providing the commitment to providing the tree save within those buffers, that limits those. So yes, they are riparian buffers, but portions of those can be, trees can be removed, but by our dedication of providing those tree coverage within those buffers, we're limiting that.
Okay. Another concern I have about this property is, a previous case we had in this area, a resident was saying just how much traffic was outside of his home. He owns about five acres, and he is ready to get out of Durham. He's moving out of Durham because of just the amount of development and traffic on this particular road. So we are pushing out people who are looking for a certain quality of life in our community, and I think that this development is really a question about what quality of life we want to provide for our citizens. I don't really see the green space that I would necessarily want in this type of area, maybe, maybe most people who move to the suburbs are looking for a certain type of neighborhood. I don't really see that with this. I'm concerned with just more pavement in the area, and again, with the urban heat island effect, more traffic, and that road, it just doesn't, it's not suitable for this. And I think that we're really hitting the gas pedal in this area in terms of developments, and I think that we should kind of slow down.
Thank you. And Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Waterman. So just a couple comments, maybe a couple, a few. So to answer Commissioner Busby's question about what's different from this one versus the last one, so I voted...
Commissioner Al Turk.
Oh, I'm sorry, Al Turk.
Thank you.
People confuse them all.
I thought it, I thought it was...
I was gonna roll with it.
Well, you all, you both asked such insightful questions. But I voted no on the previous one in particular because the applicant requested it and was basically not willing to try to improve it. So the difference here, I think, one is that the surrounding parcels or whatnot are not existing directly, is not, are not existing communities, and so it raises the questions of, you know, well, it's more of a vision of what would go on there. But when I went to Commissioner Santiago's, a couple of your points regarding development in this area, again, it goes back to, are we saying that what is envisioned right now for this part of Durham, the future land use map, has it becoming more dense? Are we saying that that's not the direction that we want to go? And at this point, we don't know because we're going through the whole comprehensive plan, you know, revamp. So it's a question of, do we pause till we figure it all out? But at the same time, it's like, there's, there's opportunity to bring some development to this area that is in alignment with the future land use map now, so, you know, what is the guide here? Secondly, I think that it's interesting that this site is, this parcel is being developed. It's just looking at the topography and the, all the elements that are on it, and so it's, I asked this question when... And so it's, I asked this question when I met with, with the applicant is, is, you know, what was the process of even trying to pursue something like this? So I think it would be interesting. One, knowing that it'll likely just be a town home, townhouse, townhouses on this property because on this parcel, even though the, the text commitment says that duplexes can go on it, I think that anything beyond town, this is just my, my thinking, anything beyond townhomes will reduce the number of units and it kind of defeats the purpose of getting the PDR to get more density on the site. So something, keep in mind, like, it's, it's a text commitment, but it's probably going to be town, all-town homes. And thirdly, I, I agree with some of the comments that, that...
Williams.
Commissioner Williams made, in the sense that while, you know, best practices may, you know, say ideally you would be able to walk to everything, that this is not like scattered in the sense that you have to go 10 to 15 miles to get to amenities because it is in a, what I would say is an attractive area, given what's happening in Durham and your ability to get to, you know, supporting amenities, employment or whatnot. And finally, but it does raise us the point that Commissioner Baker pointed out in, in that there is some leverage that can be sought to, to, to act upon in the sense that, you know, this is what the parcel is and it's more of a vision. But again, this is not a development, a site plan, a development plan that's coming from a developer is more of what we're trying to position this to be attractive to one. So I wouldn't necessarily be trying to commit the applicant to say, well, X percent of these will be duplexes, X percent will be townhomes, because we don't know what's going to work on a parcel like this. But the fact that there is flexibility to have that as part of the landscape, I think is a, is a positive rather than a negative, trying to get an applicant to say, well, would you even consider more than one product type? With the caveat being, we know that's probably going to be all-town again. So just some, some things to, to, to ponder along with everything that's else, that has been shared is that this is, again, a tricky, to some degree, application before us. But there is some nuances that distinguishes it from the prior case, in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
So I want to point out that there's nothing in the UDO that requires them to mention a product type at all. And if they don't mention one, then the whole range of product types is available. So by limiting it to now three, we're actually going smaller, not bigger, in the, in possibilities. I wish we had a unit mix here because I, when we start talking about pieces of land this big, it's, you know, I feel differently when we're talking about three acres, eight acres. A monotype project works for me, but when we're talking about 100 acres, I'd like to mix it up a little bit. And it's possible to say that the maximum number of units is 250. No more than a certain number of them will be townhouses, no more than a certain number of them will be single-family homes, and no more than a certain number of them will be duplexes. And these can all overlap as long as the maximum number doesn't exceed 250. That's allowable. That's a, a way of, of expressing the unit mix that's not done here. Because what we're seeing here, although we have language that says it could be this or it could be that, he's honestly told us it's going to be townhouses. And that worries me a little bit. I think we could do better. Let me make sure I understand. Is this another project that isn't a project but just a rezoning? Or is there an end developer in mind for this property?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Miller. To answer that question and a few others, if I, if I can as well, there's...
That's just the one I had.
That's the one, yeah, yeah. So there's, there's really three, three positions with development and builders, if you will. So we have property owners, which is, are, are in case of the last project, I was working for the project for the property owner. There's also developers, which would be the next level up. And then the end unit is really the home builder, which the developer doesn't necessarily need to be the home builder. In this case, we're in the middle. So this is a local developer. They have a new name, but it's local developers that have worked here in Durham for many of years. But it, it, it is a developer, but they may proceed to home builders or they may decide to flip the project as well.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
Do I have the ability to answer some of the other questions that were raised, Chair?
I'm still, my time...
I'm sorry, sir.
So that's one of my concerns. But back to what, what's different about this project and the other one, I do think it is interesting, and this is, Mr. Johnson raised this, in the other one, we wanted to actually change the future land use map designation up to the category that this already is at. Here, there's no future land use map change because it's, it's at the low-medium level. The other one, we were going to move it up to the, if we, if we had made the change, we were going to have a PDR that was going to be functioning pretty much in the middle range of low-medium. Here, we've already got low-medium designation, but we're, we're talking about a PDR in terms of its total density that is considerably less. And as I look at the development plan and, and in no way of calculating it, a lot of this property can't be developed because it's either in riparian buffers or it's cut off by riparian buffers or it is underneath a pretty dramatic overhead power easement. Is that right? So there's, there's principally one major development pod and a smaller development pod and then the, a little development area up in the corner. So, any rate, that's, those are the differences and there are no neighbors. And neighbors matter to me, especially when we have, when we bring different types of, of uses and units up against each other. I think, I think, you know, when I studied zoning back in law school, back when we were still writing in hieroglyphics, the principle of zoning was is to protect the reasonable expectations of people who made investments in real estate. The zoning on my land was to protect my neighbor, not me. The zoning on my neighbor's land was to protect me. And so to me, it's always a consideration as to whether or not in, in, in expanding the applicant's development rights, are we diminishing the neighbor's reasonable expectation? And so that was a big part of the last case. It's not a big part of this case. What is being proposed here, although I wish it was, it had a clearer unit mix and better design commitments, but I always want that, not saying that you should discount it because I always want it, is that this is kind of what's happening out there. We look at the aerial map and I note that on the aerial map, this property, and when I rode out there, when you look past the, the backyards of the several houses that were on, this is all wooded. But on the other side of the street, it's substantially developed. And it's developed in a fairly dense pattern of townhouses, townhouses and single-family homes with dominated by two, two-car garages. But, but, you know, they're not the worst ones I've ever seen. So I could go with this density and this development pattern on this property. I wish I had a unit mix because I think when you're talking about a piece of land this big, monotype development is not something I prefer. And I wish we had better design commitments. So, and I think it's possible to add design commitments while maintaining marketability of the property. You can overdo it and my tendency would be to overdo it, but I get that and I plead guilty to the weakness. But, so I'm, I'm mixed here on this one, but I do see it as different. And I believe you could vote differently on this one than we did on the other. Thank you. Oh, I did want to know this. What is end gables accent siding in your design commitments? So I'm seeing a range of townhouse units, then eventually there's an interval and there's an end gable that is all siding and it says accent siding. Is that a different color, a different shape?
I believe it's like cedar shank siding. I think it's like cedar shank siding.
Yeah, so for, for example, that's right. An example of that is that it could be, for, like, cedar shakes in the actual, the, the gable, the triangle end, and then standard siding below that.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there additional questions? Yes.
I'm curious to the applicant. I don't know if I heard a price point or projected price point for the units. And the reason I ask is because, I mean, we need more density and Durham's going to help with affordability. And the way we're going, if we don't get more density, we're going to have a real crisis around here, in my opinion, with the growth. I'm just curious as to what the price point would be. And I do think, I agree, this does fit more with the character of the, of the existing neighborhood, whereas some don't, but this does fit squarely. I wish it was perfect, I wish we had more things, but I always say we can't let the perfect be any of the good. So I'm just curious as to what the price point would be.
So the price point in a lot of the adjacent neighborhoods are the single-family homes are in the 400,000 range. Those are for single-family, 350. These will probably be in the mid-200s for the townhomes. That'll help provide a, a more affordable home for a, the workforce community, if you will.
Yes, Commissioner Al Turk?
Thank you, Chair. And thanks to all of you for indulging me and answering my question. That, that was really helpful. I think I more or less agree with you and I do wish there were some more, there were more commitments in here. But I, but I agree that this is a pretty good develop, a pretty good application. I do have a different, related, related question to staff. And this is, I guess, more of a general question and not necessarily about this specific case. But in this case, the applicant, and we've seen this in other applications, the, the applicant's making a donation to the, the housing fund. Now, and so I, I guess I'm, I'm curious, you know, in your opinion, your professional opinion, you know, is that a good, so basically what the applicant is saying is we, we don't want to really put affordable housing units here, we're not going to use the affordable housing density bonus, but we will pay the city to, you know, to, to provide that. And so I'm, I'm curious, you know, is that a good use of that? I mean, I, it's a good use of the money, but it, but I'm, you know, if we have, it's hard to weigh the, the differences between, you know, should we want housing units here in this location or would it be a better use of the city's money to, to have, you know, funds in the affordable housing fund? So I guess I'm, I'm curious, does someone do an analysis of that in the city that, that can give us some guidance about where we really need affordable housing units? I guess it might, in, in this case, this is relatively close to a, a commercial node. You know, it would be good to have affordable units here, right? And so how do we make that, you know, judgment?
Sure. So what I can say is that the, the proffer for that contribution is voluntary.
Right.
And then as far as who would be analyzing where affordable housing would be appropriate, that would be community development. So I can't speak specifically to where they would be looking in, in this instance of what's appropriate location. Do you have anything?
Better.
Sure. Grace Smith Planning. So I, I think the biggest thing is that, of course, at the end of the day, we would like to see affordable units everywhere, of course, you know, mixed in throughout, not just here or there or a pocket here and there. However, we, this is a voluntary proffer. They're making a proffer to, to, to donate money to the dedicated housing fund. As far as where the affordable units should go, that's something I still think that is under consideration and study. We have a, the community development department is working on a program for affordable housing, as you know, that Karen Lotto came and spoke to y'all a couple of months ago about that. So I think we'll hear more about that in the future, hopefully the near future. So, you know, but I would think that at the end of the day, we would like to see as much as we can and see it dispersed and not here, there and, you know, in certain areas. But it's, it's, it's a voluntary proffer and I really can't make a judgment call of what I think's right or wrong in that regard, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, that's right. It is a voluntary proffer and I appreciate that. I just, I, I want us to keep thinking about where we would like to, we do have some leverage here and where we would like affordable units to go. And, you know, and whether we are okay with the payment in lieu and whether that's a good use of our leverage. And so it's just something to, to think about for future cases. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Turk. Are there other comments, other commissioners who would like to speak? If not, I am ready to entertain a motion for this item.
Chair, I'll move.
Go ahead. I did the last one.
Well, Commissioner Al Turk started.
I move that we send case Z190025 forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Al Turk, second by Commissioner Williams, that we send item Z1900025, Leesville Road assemblage, forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May we have a roll call vote for this item, please?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Busby?
Yes.
Chair Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Ketchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
And Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to four.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item and I'd like to recognize Commissioner Scott McIver before we start.
Yes, Chair Hyman, I'd like to request to recuse myself in the next two cases, case Z1900046 and case Z200006, because of conflict of interest with my current employer presenting the case, both cases.
I have a request from Commissioner McIver that we recuse him for the next two items because of a conflict of interest. May I have a...
I move that we recuse Commissioner McIver for the next two cases. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Al Turk, second by Commissioner Busby, that we, that Mr. Scott, that Commissioner Scott McIver be recused from the next two items. All in favor of this motion, let it be known by the usual sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. You're excused.
Thank you, Chair Hyman.
We're ready for the staff report, please.
Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department, I'm presenting case number Z1900045. This is 1900 Hillendale. It is a committed element modification. The applicant is Katie Hamilton from Stewart. The property is located at the corner of Farn Avenue and Hillendale Road. It's located within the city's jurisdiction, approximately 1.31 acres. The zoning request is RUMD to RUMD. There is no change to the future land use map designation. And the proposal is to remove one of the text commitments that was on the cover sheet of the previously approved plan, specifically to remove the text commitment dealing with the single-car width. Thank you, I'm done. Removal of the single-car width garage text commitment. Just an overview, this will be a very short presentation. The overview, the site was rezoned on August 20th, 2018. It was case Z170049. The development plan stipulated up to 15 townhouse units. Again, the applicant seeks to remove one of the text commitments from the legacy case that requires the one single-car width garage per unit. There is a site plan, D1900379, which is currently under review. The UDO requires 28 parking stalls and 48 are currently proposed on the development plan. There are no other modifications requested of the development plan. Staff has reviewed this request and finds it consistent with a comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I do have just one, and I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. I do have one individual who has signed up to speak and that's Katie Hamilton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Katie Hamilton. I'm here on behalf of Stewart and the landowner. I don't have a presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. I did, I just want to go over the fact that we're doing this really because this is a very small site and there is insufficient room for guest parking if we do want car garages. Hillendale Road does not have on-street parking, the level of service of it doesn't allow it. And looking at Farn Avenue, there's been a lot of infill development recently. So we're a little concerned about residents of this neighborhood potentially ending up on Farn Avenue and really just hurting the character of that street as it exists. So the other thing is that this gives us the flexibility to use alternative stormwater management devices. That would not be allowed based on the space if we did single-car garages with... with driveways on single-family lots. With that, nobody else is here, but if you have questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who would like to speak to this issue? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and give our commissioners an opportunity to ask questions. I'm going to start at my left. I see Commissioner Miller's hand. Commissioner Miller.
Could you review the other remaining tax commitments or text and design commitments?
Sure. Let me open this up really quickly to go through them. So the other tax commitments that will remain include that townhome units are the only allowable unit type with a 15-unit max. The building exteriors will be limited to a maximum of 50% brick coverage with no faux stucco materials involved, or allowed, sorry. No exterior wood fencing on the boundary of the project will be allowed. The developer agrees to limit the height of any units within 40 feet of the eastern property line to a building height of 40 feet as measured by the City of Durham UDO. Townhome units may be organized in buildings of multiple units. If the number of units in a single building exceeds four, the building facade shall contain at least one articulation of 18 inches at the jointer of two units. The 20-foot-wide 0.6 opacity buffer along the eastern boundary of the project will utilize the urban evergreen buffer option. Developers shall plant at a minimum 25 48-inch tall evergreens per 100 linear feet on the eastern boundary of the property as part of the required 20-foot-wide 0.6 opacity buffer required for the city's UDO. 16 of these, 16 of these 25 shrubs per 100 linear feet will be above and beyond the buffer requirements. Developer will not put in additional street lighting beyond what is required by the City of Durham. And then there's design commitments. Do you want me to go over those?
No, no.
Okay.
And this was, these commitments were worked out with the neighborhood at the time the legacy case in 2018 was done. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And can you characterize today what the, how the neighbors feel about the change you're now proposing?
So we did not meet with the neighbors on this particular one because it was such a minor change, but we have not heard from any of them either, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Let me ask just one question. They weren't notified?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Al Turk.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I guess I like the original commitment, and I don't, you know, we've been now, we've been talking about garages and trying to limit transportation and car transit. And so I don't necessarily like that, you know, we want to add more parking spots here. So you said that's based on, or you want to provide parking for guests? So that's based on what kind of calculation? That right now each unit can have up to one or two cars or for the people who live there, or?
Yeah, so the UDO requires two cars per unit. And so I guess it would be guests as well as potentially residents if there's more than
Two cars.
Two drivers in a.
Right. So, and I, and I guess the consideration that, you know, if there isn't that third car, I guess, right, for each unit, that they would have to park on Farn. What, is there something about Farn Avenue that, where, you know, we wouldn't want cars parking there?
I guess, let me pull up, actually, I do have a copy of the staff report. But it's, it's just a ribbon-stripped paved road with a swale. So I do think that cars being parked on Farn Avenue would create more issues with passing. And it's not a very wide road either. Other than that, it's also just being considerate to, you know, the single-family residences that probably don't want our overflow.
Yeah.
Parking in front of their yards.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I don't know, I, seems like two cars a unit is sufficient. Maybe another bay is not a big deal. I'm curious what others think. It just seems like it, anything that we can do to discourage more driving and more cars, especially in, this is in the urban tier, it's, you know, it's not maybe the most walkable or most bikeable place, but it's, you know, it's relatively close to the center of town. So I'm curious what others think. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Durkin.
This question is for the applicant. Just, can you help us clarify, clarify for us? If you take out the garage, then really what does that mean the new parking situation would be? Would there not be driveways? There would just be on-street parking but within the development? Or is there a different place that people would park?
Yes, it would be internal to the development, and it would be a parking lot-based layout. It's what's currently proposed. Again, part of that is the ability to potentially use permeable pavers. That's what's currently being proposed. We're working through stormwater with a few of those issues. And that wouldn't be an option on single-family parcels because the driveway would be on a single-family residence. So the BMP is being integrated into the parking as part of.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Waterman. Just in response to your question, and being familiar with the area, I get around a little bit, is I would rather see cars internal to a site than on Farn. And I remember early on, I think when we first joined, we had that, that project site over there, and we did a walk with the neighbors. And one of the, the roads are relatively speaking thin, thin. And then, you know, with the runoff and all the other stuff, and I'm just knowing that with Hillendale becoming more and more high-traffic, when you're turning off, I would not want someone turning onto Farn with cars on the side of the road, given that it's not, in my opinion, a typical-sized road. So in that particular area, understanding the points you made about the proximity to downtown and urban tier, I would rather see it internal to the site rather than creating the implications of being on Farn. That's, but I welcome feedback.
Thank you. Commissioner Busby?
Just that, I had a similar reaction to Commissioner Johnson, so I would agree.
Thank you. Let me see if I can see beyond Commissioner Miller. Commissioner, Commissioner Miller?
That's all right. I know where you, the, so this is the third time this piece of property has come before us since I've been on the commission. I'm going to vote for this. The neighbors opposed, the first one, we voted against it. It was to create a parking lot. Then they came back after they had negotiated this, and I supported that. The, there's quite a long list of over and above commitments designed to protect the neighbors that was satisfactory to them. I would say this change is small, and it didn't turn the neighbors out, and the neighbors were well-organized and pretty articulate about what they wanted the last couple of times they came. Their absence here today is a signal to me that, that this is okay. It's okay with me, too. I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Are there other commissioners who would like to speak to this issue? Thank you. If not, I will entertain a motion.
So with regard to case Z190046 concerning the property at 1900 Hillendale Road, I move that we send this rezoning request forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Miller and second by Commissioner Baker, did I hear that right? Yes, second by Commissioner Baker, that we send item Z1900046, 1900 Hillendale, forward to the City Council, the zoning issue forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Busby?
Yes.
Chair Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Ketchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Passes 11-0.
Thank you. We are ready for the next item, but I'd like to recognize Commissioner Miller with a disclosure.
So my fellow planning commission members and those of you in the audience, this case concerns 505 West Chapel Hill Street, the old police station, Milton Small Building. And I wanted everyone to know, although there are no grounds for me to be disqualified from consideration of this case, I think it's only fair for you to know that I am the president of the Historic Preservation Society of Durham, and the organization that I am now president of, but was not at the time, took a very strong position in favor of this developer's proposal to develop this property in no small measure because of their desire to preserve the Milton Small Building and also to design the project in such a way that it would not overshadow the important historic properties across the street. So when I ask questions and make comments, if I ask questions and make comments, because I don't always, the, then you should take anything you hear me say, should be tempered by the information that I've disclosed to you now. I am a part of an organization, in fact, the elected leader of that organization, which already has a fairly strong position on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller, for your humble admission. We are.
I hope you today be different.
Ready for the staff report. Thank you.
Good evening again. Emily Struthers with the Planning Department. I will now be presenting case Z200006, 505 West Chapel Hill Street. The applicant, Zach Von Cannon, from the Fallon Company, and Katie Hamilton from Stewart, present this case for a 4.103-acre site located at 505 West Chapel Hill Street. This is the former police department headquarters and is currently owned by the Durham, sorry, by the City of Durham. City Council selected the Fallon Company as the preferred developer, and a development agreement is underway. On January 21st, City Council approved a resolution granting the expedited hearing request of this rezoning to allow the applicant to potentially meet NC Housing Finance Agency deadlines. The area of the request is, again, one parcel located at 505 West Chapel Hill Street. And the applicant proposes to change the zoning from Downtown Design District Support One to Downtown Design District Core with a development plan. The future land use map is Design District, and it is consistent with the proposal. The aerial map in your application packet shows the location of the request is highlighted in red, and it's the block bound by West Chapel Hill Street, South Duke Street, Jackson Street, and South Gregson Street. The site is located in the downtown development tier, and the site is largely paved with surface parking and contains the existing building of the former police headquarters. The site is adjacent to DDC Zone Property to the East, including the North Carolina Mutual Building. The site is also adjacent to DDS1 Zone Property of a smaller scale. Development plan identifies site access points, minimum residential units, a range of commercial and office intensity, that the building is to be retained and renovated. Key commitments include retaining that existing building, providing open areas, identifying built-to-zone calculations within the site conditions, identifying horizontal building expression, providing outdoor space and pedestrian connections. Additionally, design commitments outline that the primarily residential buildings will be located to the South Gregson Street, and primarily commercial office buildings will be located adjacent to South Duke Street. The tallest buildings will be contiguous with the adjacent Design District Core zoning, and shorter buildings will be located on the western portion of the site adjacent to the Design District Support One zoning. The proposed DDC zoning designation is consistent with the current future land use map designation, and the proposal is consistent with comprehensive plans outlined on the screen as well as in your staff report. Staff determines that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other policies and ordinances, including the Downtown Open Space Plan and Downtown Durham Master Plan, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just perusing the list of individuals who have signed up. One, two, three. Okay. I do have, all individuals have signed up for, except one has neither, so I'll assume that this is a, this is a against. So I'll start with the applicant. And there is a blank. Kathy Tamalich? Talamac, okay, and that is a for, neutral.
It's against.
Okay. All right, I'll recognize the applicant, April Johnson. Oh.
No, applicants are.
Oh, there, okay, I see you. I see you, George. Thank you. George Stanzel.
Good evening. My name is George Stanzel. I'm President and Director of Design at Stewart. I live at 115 Cofield Circle in Durham. We are quite confident in the, in the staff report. I thought it was very, very well-done and very complete. So we are here for questions. And so we'll, if there are others that want to speak, that's fine, but we, the development team is here for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Hamilton?
I think Zach and I will just echo what George said. We're here, we just wanted our names on the record in case you did have questions.
So that goes for Zach as well. Okay, I see. And then Stacy, is it Poston? Oh, there you are.
There she is.
Hello, Stacy Poston, City of Durham, General Services Department. I'm the staff project manager, available to answer questions.
Thank you. And then the last four is April Johnson.
April Johnson with Preservation Durham, 701 West Main Street. I just wanted to state that I support the application. I hope that you vote in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you. And Katie, tell me again, if it's, right, no, but for or against? Neutral. Okay. I have two neutrals that I'm going to deal with at this time, so. Come, I'm ready for you to come forward.
Good evening. Katie Talamac. I am with Durham Can, member of the Strategy Team. Good evening to you, Chairman Hyman, and to the commissioners here. Yes, as I stated, I'm neutral on the action right now because Durham Can has been instrumental in supporting the city in obtaining this property. And our goal was to advocate for this property towards affordable housing, and one of the key components we talked about that this property would have and that the developers had, that were selected would agree upon the 80 units towards affordable housing. And the D-plan that was submitted does not include language about this inclusion of the 80 units, and we just want to stress the importance that Durham Can, who always makes themselves heard, will definitely make a statement if anything changes or anything does not include the 80 units of affordable housing. So we're saying to you that, consider that as you consider this plan and the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marcia McValley?
Hi, I'm Marcia McValley, 203 North Church Street. I'm here on behalf of the Durham Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. The Coalition, like Durham Can, has been involved in the community discussion about the disposition of this property for going on three years, since the city first ran a newspaper survey and convened engagement sessions in 2017. From the beginning, we have advocated for affordable housing on this site. We support the city council's and the developers' prior commitment to at least 80 affordable housing units, affordable at 60% AMI and below, and in perpetuity. Since the council voted to sell this property to Fallon under these conditions last November, we have remained in close contact with city staff, who has kept us apprised of the steps, the documents, and the timing necessary to make this happen. We are very grateful. We are very grateful to you staff for doing this. We understand what's before you tonight is Fallon zoning map change application. We note, like Durham Can does, that while the application speaks to a total of 280-plus residential units, there is no mention of the application or in the D-Plan of the 80-plus units of affordable housing in perpetuity at 60% AMI. It's our understanding that these important matters will be addressed, however, in the restrictive covenants that are currently underway and in process of negotiation, but they have not been yet made public. Thus, our comments for this public hearing are as follows, that while we have and continue to support the expedited review process, we neither support nor oppose the D-Plan. That's why I use the word neither. I don't really want to use the word neutral, I want to say neither. We need to wait until we can review the restrictive covenants and confirm the binding requirement of the affordable housing units in perpetuity before endorsing the package. However, we further note that having the affordable housing requirements in the restrictive covenants will be a very firm, binding legal commitment that lasts in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any other individuals who have signed up to speak, but if there are other individuals who would like to speak during this public hearing, now is the time. Not recognizing any additional individuals, I will close the public hearing and give our commissioners an opportunity to ask questions. And I will start with Commissioner Durkin.
So, no surprise, my questions are all about the affordable housing component to this. Did the developer meet the HFA deadline for the application? Or if it hasn't come up yet, then are you ready to submit it?
May 15th.
Okay.
And I think we're, we're making progress on it. I think with it being May 15th, we can guarantee-
Okay.
-in March that we will make it.
And how many units are you putting in that application for the live check proposal?
Good evening, I'm Amy McHale from Wynn Development. We are not applying for 9% credits, and so we did not miss a deadline. So the 4% credits, the rolling applications cycle begins in May. That's part of the reason we're pursuing the expedited process, because we need to have site control in order to apply for the credits.
Okay. And have you already talked to the finance agency about bonds to go with the 4%?
Yes, we've had, we've had several discussions, one in-person discussion with the housing finance agency, because what we're proposing is something new to them, and we wanted to advise them of how we're, how we're pursuing the 80, the 80 units, which is a commitment that we're working with the city staff on the covenant.
Can you tell us what is new about it?
What is, it's very exciting. It's, it's a condo regime, since it's going to be truly a mixed-income building, and the fact that the units are going to be dispersed throughout the entire building, it's something that the, the state has not seen before. So we were, we met with them to advise them how other states, housing, housing finance agencies, New York, other places have pursued this, so it was, it was just to advise them of that and get them excited, as excited as we are.
I'm really excited about that. I represent affordable housing developers in New York and do the condo regime on, on the income averaging that they've started doing in New York a lot, and mixed income and all that stuff, so I'm really excited that that's coming to Durham. I wanted, I also had a question about the restrictive deck and if, and then the related loan compensing tax credit regulatory agreement, and if there would be two documents, because one would be in perpetuity, and I would assume and hope that that's the City of Durham restrictive declaration, and, or if the, you expect that the HFA regulatory agreement would also be in perpetuity, but I don't think those are typically in perpetuity here.
So, I will, I will say, one, the only covenant that we're discussing right now is related to the land and the disposition of the land. As far as the regulatory agreements with the HFA, we have not initiated the process, and we wouldn't. We're pursuing the covenant at this point because of the commitments that we made and the, the voices that you just heard. The advocates want to make sure that we are, that this land is coming with the mandate that those 80 units be there.
Okay. Did you want to add something to that?
No, I was just going to see if, did you want more detail on where we are with the restrictive covenants?
Yeah, I would like all of the detail. Yes.
I don't know.
Good evening, Stacy Poston, General Services Department, again, the project manager for this project. So, this is our strategy and our path forward is to communicate with you guys this evening around the rezoning, and which obviously is the D-Plan. Simultaneously, we are in active negotiations with the developers to engage in a number of different documents. One is a restrictive covenant document that we would take to city council in tandem with the rezoning. The intent would be that, and the thinking is that the rezoning would stand alone and have all of the other committed elements. So council, when they approved this, had five specific things that they wanted us to accomplish. Four of them are in the D-Plan that you see. The one that is not in there is the affordable housing, and that will be in the restrictive covenants that will run with the land. So at some subsequent time, if a rezoning occurred, the affordable housing would continue to run with the land separate from the zoning. And so we are being very specific and intentional about that activity because we want to have perpetual, perpetual affordable housing on this site. Additionally, you will see subsequent documents come through for approval by council, which will include things like a purchase and sale agreement and a master development agreement, which will illuminate and specify a number of elements that we are currently discussing with the developer to deliver a number of different parts and pieces of the deal. So we are here tonight in support of the rezoning so that we can have the additional height and the additional elements that we want to be able to deliver the project successfully. We want to have 300,000 square feet of commercial office on this site. This rezoning will allow us to achieve that, to have open space in the center of the site, to bring the activation of the street that we wanted to see, and to also include affordable housing on the site. So you will see all of those things either in the restrictive covenant document or in the D-Plan that we are presenting to you this evening. Happy to provide additional detail if-
No, that's good, thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners to my right, Commissioner Johnson.
So, so is, is the property a focus, is it being acquired by the developer, or is it a lease, is it a long-term lease?
Yes, so the city council voted to authorize staff to enter into negotiations with the Fallon Company to sell the property to them. And there was a specific dollar allocation related to that and specific deliverables that council enumerated for, for staff. And so we are heading towards a sale agreement with the developer based on their delivery of these five elements that council identified for our staff.
So follow, so in the case that the 80 units are being thrown out, but they are not solidified and secured in language and documentation right now, so if it becomes the case that you get past this threshold of the acquisition of the property with the developer, and since it's a 4%, it's not competitive, so it's like, it's not a question of if, can you, if, if you're able to do it, it's like, will you do it in conjunction with the city and, but in the case that the 80 units does not become a reality, is there any way that a clawback or something like, we know that's, this is what we want to do, but, you know, we got to make the economics and the project happens, and this is the ideal project where you can show mixed income can happen in a place like downtown Durham. And in the case that it falls short, what happens?
So, it is not going to fall short. We are here asking for support to rezone the property. We will then move forward to city council where we present both restrictive covenants that require the delivery of 80 units of affordable housing on-site, and they will simultaneously vote on the rezoning to see if council supports the rezoning. But we will vote on the restrictive covenants first, so the restrictive covenants attach to the land, and then the zoning attaches a week later.
Final question.
Ending approval.
And I'm asking this question for the residents of Durham County, Durham, the City of Durham, so we are, so we entered this thing, and in the event that the developer fails to meet the 80, what is the, what happens? Are they fined? Do they have to pay something? Is something taken back? What can the citizens of Durham expect from the enforcement piece if this restrictive covenant is not upheld?
Right. So, we are in active negotiations with the developer on the specifics that you will see in the master development agreement and in the purchase and sale agreement. And so at this time, we are asking for support of the rezoning, and that we are telling you that we have a specific restrictive covenants that we're at about a 95% document with the developer on that illuminate the necessity to deliver the 80 units of affordable housing. The specifics beyond regarding clawbacks and those kinds of things, we are, we recognize that we want to have these things be delivered. It is our intent toward those to be delivered. We are in active negotiations, council is involved, and we are moving those things forward simultaneously.
Commissioner Miller?
So in response to your question about what happens, the sale goes through, the covenants are in place, and they don't build the 80 units. So the council then would have the legal right to sue the developer, to, and any, and any owner that follows, to make sure that they either bill for injunctive relief, that they provide the 80 units, and if that's not available, then for damages, which would be calculated in, in some way. But essentially, that's, that would be the remedy, it was the same remedy that anybody would have here. The beauty of restrictive covenants is that it becomes immune from the zone change, and it also is immune from statutory change, because once the covenants are in place, they're protected by the Constitution and the Dartmouth College doctrine, which I will not go into. But the, those covenants can run on forever. This is about as ironclad a system as the city can create. I mean, if a developer, sometimes developers get in the middle of their projects and they don't work out, but in this instance, the city would have the right to go to court, sue for whatever remedies would be available.
Thank you. Commissioner Durkin?
But is the city also considering a right of reverter in the restrictive covenant if they fail to deliver what's been required? Because that's really what I would advocate for, especially in this scenario.
So I think the city is in active negotiations, the attorneys are involved, and we are really not at a point where I can tell you this is going to be what is available in the document. There are an array of remedies that are available, and we intend to avail ourselves of all of the remedies possible, such that we will have 80 units of affordable housing on this site.
It's hard tomorrow on a determinable fee.
Commissioner Busby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to ask if the speakers who are representing Durham Can and the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit would just mind coming up just for one moment, and I'll, I'll ask you my question as you come forward. If, if what goes to council is this proposal, but before it is the vote that does have the restrictive covenant that would guarantee 80 affordable housing units at 60% AMI in perpetuity, would you and your organizations be then ready and willing to support this proposal?
If it goes with the-
Yeah, if, if the restrictive covenant is voted on first, which is what we were just told, and it is, it is what you were requesting, it's the, it says the 80 affordable housing units at the 60% AMI in perpetuity. I know tonight you are neutral, but would you and your organizations, and if you don't know the answer, that's fine, but I'm assuming your answer would be yes, you would support that, is that correct?
Yes, that is true. We would support it as long as it had the 80 units in there.
Thank you. And the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit?
I'm not being wise alec, but I'm sort of being like you in the previous of, we don't, you know, tonight is the night, and this is what we have tonight. And we fought for this for a long time, and we know we're going to get it.
Yes.
This is what is on the, on the board tonight, so that's why we are saying we're neither supporting or opposing.
That-
Absolutely. Are you kidding me?
Thank you very much. I just want to take a moment and just say, I love this community, and this is one of the reasons why. I mean, Durham is smart, and we're pushing the envelope, and we're doing what's right, we're doing our homeworks. I want to thank the advocates because you have held the community's feet to the fire for years, and you've demanded this action, and it appears you're going to get it. I want to thank the staff because you are smart and savvy, and you've thought this through. This is really cool. This is really exciting. I will happily vote for this.
Thank you. Are there other commissioners who would like to speak to my left? Okay. Commissioner Alturk?
Thank you, Chair. I'm also very excited about this project, but I do have a, a question. I, so the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission had a few comments, and then they, they clarified their comments to us in an email, and there's one in particular that I think is, is really important, and I, I support their advocacy of, of this particular commitment. So they, they're, they're asking for a protected bike lane instead of just a, just the five-foot or the six-foot bike lane that is currently there. Or, yeah, and so they, they point to the bike and walk plan, which says, well, it, it shows Chapel Hill Street, you know, with just a bike lane, but then, you know, a couple of pages before that, it suggests that in a high-traveled street, you know, that we should have something like a protected bike lane, or that was one of the recommendations. So I would, I guess, I see staff is, Erlene is, is waiting to answer, but, so I'll, I'll stop there and then I'll let you.
So yes, we did review the comments that Erlene Thomas Transportation reviewed the comments that BPAC submitted, as well as the response of the applicant sent back. And the current facilities are consistent with the adopted plan and what the cross-section is called for. There are plans underway that are looking at additional improvements or revisions to what's currently there along Chapel Hill Street, and we do feel like those improvements will are, will be more suitable or appropriately implemented on a corridor basis versus a block by, block by block basis. So really, improving just that one section of Chapel Hill Street would not really operate efficiently without further extension of those protected bike lanes along Chapel Hill Street. Additionally, NCDOT would not likely approve a restriping of just that section of Chapel Hill Street without a more thorough corridor-wide improvement.
Okay. Thank you. I, I guess, and have you seen the Move Durham plan that, that has asked folks about, you know, biking and walking in that area? And I think that one of the concerns was having a protected lane in that, you know, strip right there. So I'm just curious, I mean, you, you're saying that there are some plans in the works, is that-
With the Move Durham Plan, you know, once it's completed and adopted as the official plan, there could be some capital improvement projects on a corridor-wide basis to implement those recommendations.
Okay, got you. Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there other commissioners who would like to speak on this issue? Commissioner Baker?
Is there a reason why we don't just have a commitment to, to 80 units at 60% AMI and below? A commitment for those units included in this application?
Is that a staff question on applicant?
Sure, yeah, yeah, anyone who-
So your question is, why are we not including in the developer plan? I think the advice of council is the best strategy is to include it in the restrictive covenants.
Okay. And then are there going to be any green building elements, like lead, lead silver, lead gold?
We have not committed to those at this time, but I think it's something we're willing to explore. It's just, we're so early in the process right now that until we understand more with both the residential and the commercial and what it ends up being, obviously, the difference between 300,000 and 400,000, you can end up with a lot of variables there, but-
But, but yes, I mean, to your, to your question, we will be pursuing the design and certification of those, but until we get the scorecards and everything like that advanced with design, then we're not going to know for sure.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions from commissioners? I too am extremely excited about this process, and I just appreciate all of the work, and it will certainly be a welcome addition to Durham, so we're, and I definitely will be supporting this. So I am, at this time, would like to entertain a motion for this item.
Madam Chair, I move that in connection with Z20, Drupal 06, that we send the case forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Williams, that we send item Z200006, 505 West Chapel Hill Street, forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation- Z200006, 505 West Chapel Hill Street, forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkum?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Yes.
Commissioner, oh, excuse me, Vice Chair Busby?
Yes.
Chair Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lowe?
Yes.
It's unanimous, 11-0.
Thank you. And thank you all. So we'll move to our next item. Our staff report, please, on this, a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. How are you this evening?
Oh, just fine and dandy, thank you. Michael Stock with the Planning Department, thank you very much. Text Amendment TC190006 is a set of technical revisions, minor policy changes to various provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance. The amendments identify necessary corrections, or clarifications, or other minor changes to clarify the intent of regulations, or to codify interpretations, or also to reflect minor policy changes that are not solely technical in nature. Additionally, there are some changes in there that are reflective of needed changes based upon recent action by the 2019 General Assembly Session this past summer. Some notable changes, I'll just point out, I tried to go through and pull out the ones that thought were the juiciest, but please, feel free to ask about any others. Some notable changes are the discontinuance of a required flume amendment application with zoning, so it would be incorporated with the zoning application. I think a number of you have been briefed on that already. That would comply with current state law, and also future state law, which actually would mandate that under the revised 160D state-enabling legislation. We're expanding notification requirements for initial zonings. Those initial zonings that, as you're aware, are associated with annexations to be consistent with all zoning requests. That was requested by council. Expanding or allowing for place of worship expansions, those that have already received special use permits, consistent with the allowances that are already in place for schools and government facilities. We're bringing back into allowing, small expansion allowance for uses that, existing uses that would have normally needed a special use permit, and these are usually much older sites that, a lot of them are actually our places of worship or school sites that didn't need, didn't need a use permit way back when, when they were first developed, but would need one now, so they're technically non-conforming. The merged zoning ordinance, the ordinance prior to this one, had this allowance of a 15% expansion before you had to actually seek the use permit, and we're bringing that back in, or at least proposing that. We are bringing in additional tree coverage in exchange for reduced parking requirements, and we are also revising the fence requirements to allow for a slightly higher fence along, for corner lots primarily along street-side yards. We see a lot of those cases come through, and, and as we always do, we like to try to analyze cases that we see familiarity with over and over and over again, and see if we just need to adjust the ordinance accordingly. So we're introducing a, a six-foot height allowance along the street-side yard without needing to seek a use permit. Normally, you would have to seek a use permit, because it would be required to be four feet. And also, just to note, there was an addendum that was sent out. I hope you all received it. If not, it was an addendum to add in amendment to Section 12102A3 that was required by the state as they reviewed the Sedimentation Erosion Control Standards that were recently adopted. They had a, as was explained to me, a turnaround in their opinion on some of the language, and they're requesting it to be removed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do I have questions for the...
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, there's no list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a list? Okay. That's what I assumed, since the seats were empty, that it was blank. So is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? Just checking. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and give our commissioners an opportunity to ask questions. I will start to my right, and then I'll look to my left. Commissioner Busby? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just had a couple questions, and I'm looking on, I'm actually just gonna look at the original memo that, so I'm looking at page, the top of page three. Just interested in hearing, I think, I think this is a, a good step, I just wanted to hear the staff talk about it a little bit more. The top two bullet points, the clarified coordination of the future land use map was zoning map changes, and then to remove the strict prohibition on approving zoning map changes inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Can you just talk about the staff's thinking and the implications that, that that would mean moving forward?
Well, straightforward, it would mean that you wouldn't need to, an applicant wouldn't need to submit us, as you saw tonight with one of your cases, they wouldn't have two concurrent cases. You would be considering the future land, future land use map consistency as part of your rezoning request, and if council, per state law, actually decided to amend the zoning that was contrary to the future land use map, they would also be amending the future land use map. Staff would, I believe, would be proposing at least some recommendations to what the future land use category would be, either for the current future land use map, or whatever the future land use map looks like in the new comprehensive plan. But it would be there, but it would still be a recommendation, but it would be built into the zoning change that the future land use map would also be amended.
Okay. And the, my, my only other question was the very last bullet point on page three, the clarify minimum dimensional standards for open space.
So right now, the, the requirement says 25 feet. It doesn't say in all directions, so we're seeing a lot of cases that it's very, exactly Tom, Tom's pointing out, they're saying 25 feet in one direction, but they're providing five feet in depth, so you, you create these weird strips. So it's really just clarifying that the intent was in all directions.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
That's all.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Thank you, Chair. On page nine, under 342, so the first paragraph has when a zoning map change request requires, and then I think you have that same paragraph under 3.54C. Is that supposed to be that way, or is that just supposed to be redundant? If not, it's just something to look at.
I'll take, I'll take a look.
It's the same exact language. Then, just one more thing, just under Section 10.3, the required parking, parking reduction, so that, it doesn't seem like you're just moving around numbers. That's actually, you're increasing the number from 20, maximum of 20 to 30, and that can include if you're close to a public transit spot, a stop, bike parking and additional tree coverage, is that correct?
Correct, and it also actually takes into consideration mixed-use overlapping peak-hour trips, not needing additional parking, with, it's already in there, but not needing additional parking when you have overlap.
That's great. I, I really like this change. Thanks, thank you.
Are there other commissioners who would like to ask questions before? Is there anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Miller?
So I have a number of things. On page three of the text changes after the memo, we talk about what happens if you let, if, if an applicant has been asked to respond to like a, a round of comments, and they don't respond ti, in a timely way. We use the term their application is withdrawn. Wouldn't a better word be terminated? Because withdrawal, to me, is something that the applicant can do. The city doesn't withdraw an applicant's application. It terminates it, but it doesn't withdraw it, because it never submitted it. The applicant did that.
I, I understand that. We've always used the term administrative withdrawal. That's been a term that we've always, that we've always used.
All right, thank you. And then going on, I, my next comment. This business about future land use maps changing automatically with zone changes that are inconsistent with the future, this is driven by the recent statutory change, and we're gonna have to do this by January of next year.
That's correct.
But we're making a reservation when that change is also a tier boundary.
Do you know when, because tier boundary is not part of the future land use map?
It's on the future land use map, but it's also a zoning category, and so it can be treated separately.
Yes.
And then on, on page 11 in the table, we're adding in the CDCC Core Support 1, Support 2. Is that because of Patterson Place?
Yeah, that's just a technical correction.
We're just catching it up.
Right.
And then I'm, this is a pet peeve of mine, and on pages 12 and 13, we talk about the ability to make these 20% expansions, and we use the word can be approved administratively. That just drives me nuts, because it implies that they could also be denied administratively, and that's not what you mean, is it? Because if it can be, if there's discretion in the decision to approve the expansion or deny it, well, the staff doesn't have that authority under the statute. That's only something that the Board of Adjustment could do.
The wording, the way I get to that wording is, is that it's just making it, just making it clear that the expansion can happen through administrative approval, and not having to go back and get a new special use permit.
Yeah, but my point is, is when you use the word approval, you imply the word that it may be disapproved.
Okay. So we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners?
There's lots of.
Oh, he is not done. Thank you, Tom.
So I'm on page 19, and I'm in 831 Tree Coverage Standards. And we have taken out the words in, I'm in 5A, and it says, we're taking out the words used for active recreational purposes, and we're putting in the word disturbed, so we're up here.
Okay.
And so I'm concerned about what the effect of this change is. Does this mean that tree vase, a tree, because what it says today is, is that your, your tree coverage area shall not be used for active recreational purposes? If we ta, take that out and put in the words disturbed, I'm all for that, but does it now imply that the tree save area, or the preserve tree coverage area can, can now be active recreational areas, as long as we don't disturb them?
This is the, the extent to what the, yes, you could have, if you wanna have some sort of running around through the trees, sure, but this is the extent to what you can do to disturb tree coverage areas.
Right. My guess, it seems to me like we're taking the se, the section, and we're changing its meaning substantially, because right now, if I have a, a development plan, and I've got my, my tree preservation area over here, I have to have a separate area set aside for active recreational purposes.
Yeah, this is...
Now it looks like if we make this change, my, that my active recreational area can actually be in my tree preservation area.
This is really just getting at, this section is talking about the extent that you could disturb that area. It happens to be about unpaved trails and trails and other such amenities. So we're just actually getting the language to say what it's actually talking about.
I agree.
So that's, that's the extent of it.
My question is, is if we make the change, will the active recreational, never mind, I get it. So now I'm on page 20 in the project boundary buffers. And it says that in the rural and suburban tiers, the interactive buffer model can be used under the following conditions. It's where you've got a slope problem, or where an existing condition prevents supplying the minimum required width limited to the particular section where the condition exists. So you can use it in those two areas. Where else can you use the, the, the buff, interactive buffer model? I'm, I'm a little concerned that I might be missing something about interactive buffers, because we're not making a change.
No, there's other areas that you can use the interactive buffer model.
All right, thanks. I thought so. And then on page 21, change of use. This is required motorized vehicle and bicycle parking, required parking, change of use. Can you give me example of, of, of how this, the proposed change will be different after we make the change from the way it exists today?
I'm sorry, this is one section that I just don't remember that much about. Oh, this is just expanding, really just a way to expand the, when a building is in actual, in change of use, so if, and not looking at parking as much to require a site plan approval, so it's allowing an adaptive reuse of a building much more efficiently.
So can you give me, can you make up an example?
Well, going from restaurant, or from retail to restaurant, you might need more parking depending upon the size of the restaurant versus what retail was, because restaurants generally require more parking than, than retail or some other uses, than that, those instances.
So how will it work? Say, say we're going from retail to restaurant. Today, I might need to have more parking, and what, what, what will, what administrative process will that trigger?
They usually go through the Development Services Center, as they currently do now, because these are standards that are currently applicable in other areas, and they would just get a, a parking determination. They would inquire with staff what would be required, what, what they're looking to do, and, and usually they have concept meetings and such, and they would go over whether they would qualify or not.
Thank you. And then... I think you've already explained that one. And, Madam Chair, we are done. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Oh, my. Oh. Are there other commissioners who would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I think we are ready to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, in case TC19406, Omnibus 14, I move that we send it forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation, except for that I would like to change that language in the very first thing that I talked about, where we hate the way we use the word withdraw.
I didn't hear a commitment to change the language.
We'll, we'll take a look at it and see if there's...
Good enough, take a look at it.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Busby, that we send item TC190006, Omnibus 14, forward to the City Council with a favorable, favorable recommendation, and some tweaking.
Does that need to go to both governing bodies?
I'm sorry. Both the City Council and the Board of County Commissioners with a favorable recommendation. All in favor of this motion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkum?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Busby?
Yes.
Chair Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowe?
Ah, yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Past 12-0.
Thank you. We do have a new business item, and staff will...
Before we move to that, Mr. Stock wanted to give you just like a very quick, brief blurb about what I was talking about earlier, with the sidewalks and the street trees, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
So I heard there was discussion about street trees while I stepped out twice. So just for your edification, you'll probably be seeing a text amendment later this spring, early summer, hopefully later this spring, more than early this summer. After working with Trees Durham, it's born out of the last tech, set of text amendments we did for landscaping and buffering, working with Trees Durham to moving towards street trees in the right-of-way. But they understood that there needed to be additional work and coordination with other departments to make that an effective program. One thing is, and it was, it was convenient that it was actually happening at the same time, updating landscape manual to, it's being updated anyway, but also look at it for appropriate, an updated look at appropriate species and planting techniques for within the right-of-way. And then also, taking a look at our street cross-sections, because right now, they don't accommodate street trees in the right-of-way unless you ask for them. So that's a current requirement. You can ask for street trees in the right-of-way, and they're mandated in the design districts, but otherwise, they don't have cross-sections for that. And it's really important that we take a hard look at that, because city municipalities are starting to lose their control of right-of-way, of what they can do in right-of-way, especially specifically with broadband, fiber optic installations, where it's pretty much almost mandated to a certain extent. So we're looking at ways to make sure that such dry utilities, as public works, folks like to call it, get placed in a, in a way... get placed in a way that are not going to conflict as much or minimize the conflict with street planting areas. Because what's also most important is that once the street trees are planted within the right-of-way, they become the responsibility of the city. And we need to have a thoughtful and long-term maintenance plan for that. So it's a minimized burden on the city in terms of replacement and the survivability of the trees.
The Chair recognizes Commissioner Miller.
So transportation used to have a terrible heartburn about trees in the right-of-way. Trees between the sidewalk and the curb because of line of sight, especially at corners. Is that heartburn eased now?
No, the site triangle requirements are still going to be in place. There's enough flexibility in the placement of street trees that you can avoid site-disent triangles.
All right, good.
Thank you. Now we have an item under New Business.
Yes, so if you recall at our work session in late February, we discussed the desire, not just of the staff, but of the commission as well, to have updates more often about the comprehensive plan. And so moving forward, we were, in preparation of that, we would like to offer a suggestion, we're requesting, that you consider a suspension of the Rules of Procedure Section 3.6 Order of Business just during the time that the comprehensive plan is in, during the engagement, drafting, and development of the comprehensive plan, so that we may come to you monthly with an item that's early enough on the agenda to get, to make it more meaningful to present the item when people are here versus at 9:00 at night when no one's in the room. And we don't want to have to ask for the adjustment every month when we come, so it's kind of a blanket adjustment, if you will. So what we're asking for is to temporarily during the development of the comprehensive plan, suspend Rules of Procedure 3.6 Order of Business so that we can place a holding spot between item four and five on the agenda, which would be right after the adjustments, but before the public hearing starts. Public hearings start while we have a room full of people that can probably, hopefully glean something from these updates. And we will try our best to keep these updates limited to a reasonable amount of time so that everyone that's here doesn't feel like they're sitting and waiting for their item all night long, so.
So if it's appropriate, Madam Chair, I move that...
Let me ask one question first. Once we add this item in, sometimes we designate items with, you know, timeframe. Will you basically, you know, have, say, 20 minutes or however? You know, will it be a lengthy, if it's just an update, it's just going to be a short insert?
It's hard to say because some months it might be five minutes and some months it might be 30 minutes. I would like to not designate a time period. However, we will make our, as best promise as we can to this group and to the audience not to make them sit through some lengthy...
Because we can always move it.
True.
Meeting by meeting.
If it's something that requires a lot of deliberation and discussion, we could move it, certainly.
That's a good idea because we can change the order of, once we do this, if we need to change the order of the agenda.
We just wanted to have this holding spot from now on, and we can move it around if we need to.
Very good. I'd like to recognize other commissioners.
I had a question on the procedure of it too. Is this something that you're just presenting information, or would this be something that would be up for discussion or up for a public hearing?
Mostly if it's an update, it's not going to be a back-and-forth discussion. We will be bringing you updated on things that are going on, bringing the attendees up to date, the people at home watching, the people live streaming up to date. It's more of an engagement tool, if anything.
No, I think that's a good thing. I just...
But if it's a deliberation or a voting and it requires a public hearing, it's going to be under the public hearing part, right?
I just didn't want to have a continued conversation every month about it.
No, and it will be different, different updates.
Yeah, no, I think this is a really good idea.
It's to really bring you up to speed on what's going on at this point in time.
Thank you. Well, I think Commissioner Al Turk, that was your question as well.
Does that cover that for you, Commissioner Al Turk?
And then Commissioner Busby.
I was just going to thank the staff for being responsive. This is what we talked about, and this is what we are interested in, and you brought it back at the next meeting, so thanks.
Sure.
Are there other commissioners who have questions? If not, we're going to, I'd like to entertain a motion to make this adjustment.
So Madam Chair, I move that between now and such time as the comprehensive plan is approved by the elected bodies, that we suspend our rules concerning order of business so that there may be on the agenda for planning commission meetings from time to time, as may be necessary, an opportunity for the staff to present a report, an update on the progress of the comprehensive plan development before our public hearings.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, is there a second?
I would second the motion to do what Tom said.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Busby, that we implement the specified motion as outlined. All in favor of this motion, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was, and that was the end.